Flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll call tenants, please.
Mr. Aaron Nacho?
Here.
Mr. Eric Ticoso?
Here.
Mr. Casey, Axon, Mrs. Saru?
Here.
Mr. Bruno?
Here.
Mr. Roldati?
Here.
Mr. Flora?
Here. Okay. All members have received the minutes from the May 20th meeting. If there's no comments on the minutes, could you get a motion to accept the minutes as written by the secretary?
No move.
Second. Motion made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay. Our first item on the agenda this evening is Sonnet Properties LLC for lot line realignment. It's for a public hearing. Need to get a motion to open the public hearing.
No move.
Second.
Okay, motion made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Hello, Brian Stokosa from MA Day Engineering helping Ernie Martin out tonight. He's away, family emergency. Hearing tonight for Sonnet Properties, we're in front of the board for two meetings regarding a lot line realignment along New Hackensack Road. It's a total of four parcels, around 28 acres and change. What the applicant would like to do is basically a lot line realignment between the four parcels. Parcel A, which is toward the... Parcel A, which is near the intersection of New Hackensack and Nicholas Road. And then we have two buildings here, which will be parcel B, parcel C, there'll be a lot line realignment. And then there is also a former stockpile area, material, stockpile area with access roads that will be combined into parcel C. And then parcel D will eventually be left for open space. The applicant would like to sell the piece as is, in the hopes that somebody may retain the use of the storage area, but other than that, it's just a lot line realignment. We're not proposing any new uses. At the last meeting, we discussed blanket drainage easement across the piece. We have a couple of culvert pipes that cross each parcel. We also described a lot line rea... A adjustment of a lot line on parcel B so that access is all on one parcel. And speaking to Ernie, he had family emergency, so he was agreeable to the changes, however, they weren't submitted just due to time constraints. Okay, that's whoever here tonight.
All right. Yeah, so why don't we see if we have any comments from any of the public. If there's anybody that has, that wishes to make any comments regarding this lot line realignment, please come up to the podium. Okay, seeing that there's no public comment, I guess probably just rehash a couple of items to, so you can convey back to Ernie regarding what needs to be put on the plan going forward. Just a little first touch with David. Did you have any?
Right, I... We have a memo dated May 16th, I think you've got it, Brian. So, everything that's in the memo except that each lot's gonna have its own individual access, so the reference to cross access easements is not valid. So, except for that, it's just what's in the letter, just homework, no showstoppers.
Okay. All right. Pete, regarding the easement?
Yeah, we had, Bob had a comment letter dated May 19th in there. He talked about, you know, as Brian, Brian mentioned about the various culverts that cross, cross the property. We had talked about a little bit earlier that these drainage culverts don't, don't take any water generated by the town. There are a couple culverts that are coming from, I assume from across, from, from the airport that comes into a stormwater pond. I don't know if you, did you like install that stormwater pond, Bucky, or was that the county?
It's been just a week, we've done that. Yeah, that's how we're doing it now.
Okay, so what we had discussed earlier was that I would just contact the county Department of Public Works and see if they had any, any interest in possibly having, having an easement through this, through this property in order to like continue, you know, the drainage that they have coming, coming over from the airport. So, I will give them a call. And then the other thing that we had was, we got a, a letter, I believe it was from the lead agencies, Circulation Barbers, was that right? We got from the county.
Regarding the...
Health Department. So, Brian, they asked about parcels B and C that have the two, the two existing, you know, houses on them that are offices. So, you know, they talked about, you know, whether they should come in for Health Department approval, but I, we don't, we don't think that that, that needs to happen, so. But if you could at least get with, get with Ernie and at least show where the existing wells, you know, approximately where the existing wells and septics are, just so that we can make sure that, you know, the lot line changes aren't gonna have any like effect on them, I don't think so, but...
Do you think that the wells on B and C, wells and septics are actually on those parcels, B and C?
On there.
The wells and septics for parcels B and C?
Right.
Bucky, are they on those?
They're on those parcels.
Okay.
All right, so we can just generally, you know, generally show where they are on the map and then that'll, that'll, you know, take care of any concerns as far as the Health Department goes.
It seems simple enough, I mean, it seems like everything here is just dot the i's, cross the t's kinda deal. Is there possible that we could go with a final approval with contingent based upon what we discussed tonight, plus the common letters that are before us?
Okay. I mean, if the, I mean, bigger item right now is to get everything up, get the plans all updated and resubmitted, professionals review it one last time, and at that point we can move forward from there for final approval.
Okay.
Okay?
What do we decide about the easements as far as, you know, cross, cross access easements?
We don't really need them because each parcel's gonna stand on its own.
Okay.
All right, had to take a stab at it, you know? I'll relay the message to Ernie.
For purposes, I don't want the clock to start.
Right.
I didn't hear you.
I'll resubmit. Based upon our input.
Based upon the comments, you'll make this middle?
Yep.
Okay. All right, once we get that, then we'll, we'll get it back.
Or she may wanna adjourn the hearing to a date certain.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
That's okay.
Well, is there a need to adjourn it to a date certain? That's gonna be...
Well, if we close it tonight, then the clock starts, and we don't know how long it's gonna take to make these changes.
Okay.
We don't wanna be beholden to the applicant.
I mean, what we discussed tonight, throwing two wells on, two septic areas on, Ernie can run these and around the drainage areas. Health Department, I don't, we discussed, we just showed...
Yeah, just show the wells.
We just showed wells and septics. I mean, Ernie could turn that around relatively quick, within, within the 62-day window.
Think it'd be... Would you be ready for the July 15th meeting?
Look, I'm confident we could do that.
Okay. So, you get a motion to adjourn the public hearing to July the 15th?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion's made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, we'll see you on the 15th.
Assuming that a new submission is made, would you like a draft resolution for that evening as well? Or postpone that?
Pending the review of...
It's pretty minor.
Who's the board field? What was pending? The review of the submission, if it's a completeness to have the planner write a resolution for approval?
Sure.
Okay. You have a motion to have him move over to that?
I'll make that motion, second.
Motion's made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay. Our next item on the agenda is NRP Holding Tractor Supply Company and Retail Store. Need a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Good evening, Alec Lad from Cutty and Fader. I'm joined by Matt Darling, the applicant, and Jim Cassidy, our project engineer. As this board knows, we've been pending for, since about January, and we look forward and welcome the public comment and the opportunity to hear them tonight. That being said, we've been before the board for a while, and we've already incorporated a lot of project changes into our project, including some highlights which are, we've executed a shared access plan, we've changed the building facade, we've moved some trailers to the back of the structure, adjusted stormwater retention basin, and these are all some changes that Jim's gonna cover, but also we've incorporated comments since the last meeting regarding landscaping and, I think that, and lighting that were updated on the plans.
Okay.
So, good evening, for the record, my name is Jim Cassidy, I'm professional engineering principal with a firm, Halcy Pearson and Cassidy. I'm just gonna go over briefly the proposal and then the changes we've made since our last meeting. Again, the site is 5.89 acres parcel of highway business-owned land located on the Wesley side of New York Route 9. This is the Accura dealership off to the north, and then Fowler House Road is down to the bottom. As we presented last time, what we were working on is coming up with a shared access agreement so we can combine the driveway with the Accura dealership to the north. That's occurred in all revised plans that you have. So, the existing curb cut driveway out of the Accura dealership along the south side of the property is eliminated. We're gonna build a new driveway along the side of our property. This will provide access, an exit access for the Accura dealership and then all the access for our proposed tractor supply site. The site itself is gonna consist of a building, 19,097 square feet, located about 250 feet off the roadway. Majority of the parking to the front, 51 parking spaces to the front, an additional 17 to the back for 77 parking spaces, and as mentioned previously, your regulations require 128, but we are before the zoning board of appeals for variance on that to reduce the number of parking spaces. Last time, what was requested of us was number one, to make sure that there was response back from New York DOT. We did submit a response letter from them, and basically they had three comments. Number one, they wanted to ensure that we had an easement or an agreement in place with the Accura dealership, which we do. We've provided a copy to DOT and also to this board. In addition to, they wanted to confirm that the driveway, the existing driveway would be removed, which it is, but the area between their site and our site would be regraded and landscaped, that we would square off their corner of the parking lot in, in this corner here, and once again, the access would be come between their service building and their dealer building that's to the front of the site. And then finally, they just wanted to make sure that Tractor Supply is proposing to do the work, which in the agreement it does state, that Tractor Supply is actually gonna do this work on behalf of the Accura dealership. In addition to, last time, we had not submitted an updated landscaping plan. There were some comments from the plant, your planner. Those comments consisted of, number one, they wanted a staggered row of evergreens along the southerly boundary line, which has been incorporated on the landscape plan that's been submitted. With, in this southern section, we have a total of about 50 evergreens planted at this point, consisting of green giant junipers, some firs, then there's some additional pine trees up on this front portion. In addition to, within the island, we had some trees that were not classified as straight canopy trees or shade trees. Those were replaced, in their place, there was put red maples to meet that requirement, and the size of those trees were also increased to a minimum of three-inch caliper. Also, along the front, we talked about some additional landscaping. We had the three trailer areas. We're proposing to do is put some lower shrubs consisting of junipers and also some rhododendrons to shade or to, to screen those areas. Once again, remember that the grade from New York Route 9 into the site drops down, so we're gonna be shading or screening the edges of these areas. So, there's a total of about 30 lower shrubs, about three for high shrubs are gonna be planted in that area. You also asked at the last meeting that we submit an application, a separate application for the Accura dealership. So, we did create a separate plan. We obtained a copy of the previous amended site plan for the Accura dealership, and we incorporated all the changes that are gonna occur on the Accura dealership property along with our property. So, the Accura dealership site consists of about 3.64 acres. Once again, we've noted the existing curb cuts going to be removed. There's a shared access easement on our site that provides access for this new driveway, and then those parking areas are gonna be squared off for them. In addition to, between the two properties, right now there's a null. We're gonna grade that off, so it's a uniform grade between the two. And the only other thing that's gonna happen on their property is there's gonna be some new signage put in. At the front corner, there's gonna be a sign indicating that this is where the dealership parking will be, so customers coming in, the bycars on the front. And then to the back, we're gonna add some directional signs to indicate the exit to Route 9 is this way, then some stop signs at this intersection, and then our intersection also. So, the only other thing really happening on their property is signage. So, that's basically the changes that have happened since the last meeting. With that, I'm gonna conclude. Gladly answer any questions, the commission they have.
Okay. I think at this time, I think we need to open up the floor for public comment. This is a quick statement here. The purpose of the public hearing is to accept public comment for any important and relevant information regarding the project. It's not the function of the planning board to promote or oppose a certain project if it complies with the appropriate sections of the zoning law, and if the application is consistent with all criteria set forward in the zoning law, the planning board has no authority to deny the application. After the applicant's professionals have made their presentation, which they already have, we're gonna open up the floor now to public comment. Those speaking must identify themselves and state clearly their name and address. All comments have been directed to, are to be directed to the planning board and not to the applicant or the applicant's professionals. For the expediency, redundant comments will not be entertained, but they will be acknowledged and being readily brought to the attention of the planning board. This time, we're gonna go ahead and open up the public comment. If you wish, come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and...
Hi, good evening. I'm Brian Zanstra, and my wife and I have been owners and tenants at Six Fowler House Road for a little over 20 years. Our home shares the southern property line with Tractor Supply's proposed location. We emailed some photos to the board on June 10th. We didn't really have the means of blowing them up and presenting them here. Our concerns are primarily privacy and the economic value of our home, but also noise, especially during construction, and now too dirt during construction, looking at how that site in Connecticut was maintained. We think the pictures illustrate our concerns pretty well, and I hope the board members had a chance to take a look at them. So, we understand that any development on this property is gonna have an impact on us, but we think the impact of the current plan is pretty excessive. We feel one of the best ways to reduce that impact is to increase the separation between our property line and the development. Tractor Supply's proposed store is larger than not only our home, but the entire lot it's built on, and that doesn't include the outdoor display area or the parking. We don't believe that the zoning ordinance ever intended for a commercial development that large to be situated so close to a residential property. We have two particular areas of concern in the code. The first is in Chapter 240, Article 6, Section 37, the district regulations, and specifically attachments 3 and 4 that contain dimensional regulations for residential and non-residential districts. Attachment 4 covers the non-residential districts, and it's explicit in Notes 3 and 4 that where a commercial lot abuts a residential district, the most restrictive setbacks of either district should govern. The required side yard for the highway business that Tractor Supply zoned in is 10 feet, but the required side yard in our district is 25 feet, and so their proposed plan allows for a 25-foot side yard. We feel that yard should be 50 feet for three reasons. First, Notes 3 and 4 in the attachment clearly assume that the commercial property and the residential property are gonna have their side yards abutting or their rear yards abutting, but that's not the case here. Tractor Supply will be abutting our rear yard, and we think that the rear yard setback is appropriate because of that, and the rear yard setback in our district is 50 feet. Second, we feel that the side yard setbacks are typically less restrictive because of the nature of use. Side yards typically don't see as much use as a rear yard. They call it a backyard barbecue for a reason, but Tractor Supply's intended use here is two lanes of vehicle traffic, and we don't feel that that level of use is what the code had in mind when it established residential side yard setbacks. Finally, the code explicitly favors residential districts where they butt commercial districts, and it runs counter to that idea that I'd only be allowed to build within 50 feet of this property line on my side while Tractor Supply is permitted to build within 25 feet of the same property line. The second area of the code, and I'll be briefer here, is Chapter 240, Article 5, Section 25, multi-family and non-residential uses. This section requires a buffer of at least 20 feet for multifamily or non-residential use that abuts or is even directly across the street from any property in a residence. The code doesn't explicitly state that the buffer is in addition to the yards and setbacks required elsewhere, but it is in a separate article and section, so it seems to us that those dimensions were intended to be in addition to the yards and setbacks. So, we believe the separation should be the 50-foot yard plus the 20-foot buffer for a total of 70 feet, not the 25 in the current plan. I'd also point out that the code's very clear in Section 14 that the requirements it contains are minimums. Tractor Supply, the plan proposes to do the absolute minimum required by the code according to their interpretation, and we don't feel it's appropriate in this case where, again, the proposed store alone is larger than our property. We think our privacy and the value of our home and those of our neighbors deserve more consideration than what the current plan proposes, and we don't think that that plan meets the intent of the zoning regulation. It seems to us that at least some of this increased separation would be relatively easy to achieve. The current plan includes three lanes of traffic around the store, and it seems like that could be reduced to two. Also, this plan currently is for a store that's roughly 150 feet north to south and 125 feet east to west, so turning those dimensions 90 degrees by themselves could increase that separation by 25 feet. And that's all, even assuming the development really should be as big as the current plan proposes. Frankly, we don't think so, and we think the requested parking variance reflects that, but we also recognize that discussion's really more appropriate for the zoning board, so we'll save that for next week. Unless you have questions for me, that's all I have.
Yeah. Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, members of the town board. My name is Caitlin Eckerson. I reside at 10 Fowler House Road with my husband and two children, a three-year-old and a seven-month-old. I'm here before you today to urge you to deny the proposal for the development of Tractor Supply. My husband and I are proponents of economic growth and have nothing against Tractor Supply Corporation. However, the proposed plot of land is too small to fit a large commercial building and will offer minimal buffer between the commercial lot and the adjacent residential neighborhood. This will have a serious impact on the residents of Fowler House Road in regards to noise and light disturbance, decreased privacy, home value depreciation, as well as possible air, soil, and water pollution. Although the construction phase will only take four months, there is significant concern regarding air pollution during that time. Our homes will be exposed to a significant movement of dust and dirt particles from the site that will drift into our properties, particularly on windy days, as well as exposure to air pollution from heavy equipment, materials used in construction, and the pouring of asphalt, a known carcinogen. These conditions can be especially detrimental to young children, the elderly, and those with pre-existing respiratory conditions. We bought this house that our daughters would have a safe place to play and grow. Due to these poor air conditions from construction, having strangers working off of our backyard, which causes a safety concern for our daughters and possible health hazards, we will be unable to utilize any outdoor living space during this time. We would also like to know what chemicals will be held on site. Tractor Supply is known to sell fertilizer, pesticide, animal feed, propane, as well as sell heavy equipment. Evidence has shown that fertilizer, lubricating oil from heavy equipment, pesticides, propane, and gasoline products can cause a host of health concerns, including endocrine disorders, cancer, central nervous system disorders, pulmonary disease, et cetera. Additionally, it is also well documented that children and women who are pregnant or breastfeeding and those who are immunocompromised should avoid exposure to pesticides at all cost. Due to the close proximity that Tractor Supply will have to our homes, we are at high risk of being exposed to these products through air inhalation and seepage into the soil and risk of it contaminating our wells. My husband and I had been told by the town a few months ago, as well as by Matthew Darling two weeks ago, that we are lucky because our house will be least affected by Tractor Supply because we will not be looking at the building but the garden center. While we will not have to look at a large commercial building directly off our property, we will have to worry about the products being sold in the garden center and what is being used to fertilize the plants in the garden center, and how that may be affecting our health, particularly our two girls. We want to know how they will control rain runoff from entering our property. We are highly concerned that when it rains, there will be runoff containing residue of fertilizer or pesticides from the garden that could enter our property. Over time, the runoff will build up in our soil, leading to contamination of the soil and possibly our well water, which could pose a health hazard to our family. We would also like to know if there are any chemicals stored in site. How will the chemical waste be disposed of? We are, again, concerned about the well water contamination and soil contamination. Due to this concern, this is gonna require us to do frequent testing of our well water to ensure safety for drinking. Will Tractor Supply be financially responsible for ensuring our water is tested regularly as well as our neighbors? I would also like to further note a concerning issue I have found out in my research of Tractor Supply. The Tractor Supply Corporation has been previously cited for violations multiple times by the EPA and other governing agencies. They've been cited by the EPA in 2018 in Waco, Texas for hazardous waste activity, in 2015 for selling heavy equipment that was in violation of the Clean Air Act in Texas, and 2014 for failure to report propane storage at five Tractor Supply locations in Washington State. 2018, they were cited by the DEC in New York for the possession and sale of a restricted-use pesticide called Telstar One at their store locations in Utica and Plattsburgh. And in 2003 and 2002, three Tractor Supply stores in Kansas were fined for selling restricted pesticides. They were also found to be in violation six times by the California Air Resources Board, with the most current violation in 2018 in relation to the sale of off-road engines that could cause air pollution. Due to, due to these allegations, our trust in the honesty of Tractor Supply and its wherewithal to protect the health and well-being of our residents of Fowler House Road is severely diminished. We have the following requirements of Tractor Supply to help ensure our privacy, health, and home values. The use of an elevated berm to prevent runoff and protect the natural look of whatever woods are left at our property, with the use of a privacy fence and evergreens that are full in appearance, fast-growing, and offer year-round privacy. There should not be any second-floor offices. Our house will be in plain sight of Tractor Supply in the winter, and our bedrooms are on the second floor. We want to ensure that our privacy is protected. In order to reduce noise disturbances, there should be no outdoor speakers, and shipments and delivery should not be allowed to be conducted before 8:00 AM and after 7:00 PM. We want to fight to increase the barrier between Tractor Supply and our properties. There should not be any lights directed toward our homes, and the lights should not be on all night. During the winter, this would cause severe light disturbances to our residential homes. Any light left on should be run by motion center only. These requirements stated are not an act of acceptance of Tractor Supply. We urge the town board to please take these issues into consideration and protect the privacy and well-being of the tax-paying residents of Fowler House Road, and do not subject them to the degradation of privacy, safety, and health risks that this company will bring. We understand that this is a commercial land, but the development of a small business would be much more appropriate, and it would still provide a decent buffer zone between the building and the residential homes. There is plenty of real estate in this area that could accommodate a large corporation such as Tractor Supply that is in a commercial area and will not infringe on our residential neighborhood. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comment. Could you give a copy to the secretary so you should have it for the record?
I also have other some of the other vibrations I have this one.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to make any comments?
My name is Gail Pfeifer, and I live at 4 Fowler House Road, on the second house. I am a senior citizen. I've been living there for 33 years. I'm a two-time breast cancer survivor. I'm very careful about everything that I do. I'm very concerned about the environmental state of my home. It's because the area is so close, and I'm not sure if any of you board members have been to this site to see exactly what I'm talking about, because it sits, the parking lot is going to sit right in my backyard. I have a fence, I have pictures, I have a fence, and I have a few trees that are still on my property, but I'm also concerned as well with the privacy, and I really would strongly urge you to request that a fence be put up on a berm such as Adams has. And I have pictures of the fence that Adams has that protects the people in their area. I also don't understand how this has been able to come this far on this small piece of land. We're a few houses, but they're our houses. We've been there for years, and the impact that this is going to have is going to be really detrimental. We're going to have noise, we're going to have extreme noise when they're building. I don't know if they're going to be blasting. I don't know what particles are going to come on my property. I don't know if my fence is going to be destroyed. I have a fence, a chain-link fence, and a new dog. I don't know if this is going to be damaged when they take away the trees, which are right next to my fence, because there's no barrier, there's no, the area, it's so small. Okay. And also, the fence needs to be put up for security reasons. I don't want anybody to be coming on my property or my neighbor's property around to my house through the back area. So I really strongly think that we need a berm up high and a fence to protect us all security-wise. The trees, we need to have trees. I don't know much about the trees that they had said that they're going to put in, but the trees need to be deer-resistant. We have a lot of deer in that area. I don't want to have them putting up trees that are evergreens that the deer are going to eat. So, one of the ones that's been recommended is the Norway spruce, 10 feet apart staggered on my side, and then the fence, and then their property. So, my biggest issues are privacy, security, and a noise barrier.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I have pictures, too. Actually, I wanted to say one other thing. When they do the tearing down of the trees, who's responsible for protecting, I have a small stone wall that's on my property, who has, who's going to be responsible for making sure that nothing's damaged? These trees, there's a lot of big trees, there's a lot of dead trees, but I just was wondering who's responsible for the damage that may occur on my property?
Okay, we'll have that addressed also.
Thank you.
If you, if you could, if you have any pictures or documents you'd like to give to the secretary that you can put into the record.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other comments, sir? The gentleman in front.
I'm going to go first. He was a... I could be as well first as everybody else, but my, my name is Dwight Pfeifer. I live 4 Fowler House Road. I've been living, my wife and I have been living there for 33 years since 1986. My wife and I are very concerned that Tractor Supply is trying to build their business at an imposition of the abutting residential homeowners. Tractor Supply is imposing their needs due to the lack of acreage at the sacrifice of homeowners' needs. Safety is priority in our, in our minds, and privacy...
Yeah, it's a road, she got his name.
Oh, Dwight Pfeifer, P-E-I-F-F-E-R, 4 Fowler House Road. I'm sorry. As I just said, you know, safety is priority, privacy is another component, and containment of noise is another issue that we're very concerned about with opening up the acreage to Route 9 and the noise from Route 9, which you've been already deluged with noise from that because of the light and everything. Tractor Supply has the responsibility, or at least the consideration, to work with the community, and that's seeing us as an obstacle to their means. Such is a large project as such a small parcel of land is concerning, to say the least. The reputation of Tractor Supply with EPA, such as violations and large fines, levied against them various lawsuits. This, in my view, is alarming, and especially next to residential property. History of rodents due to storage of feed has also have been an issue. If you look on the websites and stuff like that, you'll see that there's residences that have had issues, that they abutted the land of Tractor Supply and having issues with rodents. Increasing buffer area currently 25, which was just previously spoken of. As I mentioned before, environmental concerns, well, I didn't mention it, but propane tanks, insecticides, fertilizers, weed killers, et cetera, dust and debris emanating on homeowners' houses of property. Should they be some means or way responsible, at least have our houses power-washed after they're finished? List of development and construction needs. In need of a eight-foot stockade fencing, such as Adams accommodated its neighbors with a berm, as my wife just previously mentioned. Also, buffer trees such as Norway spruce that are disease-resistant and deer-resistant, from what I understand, I could be wrong about that. And the spruce, these Norway spruce should be about 10 to 12 feet, staggered 8 to 10 feet, planted facing property owners in front of the proposed fencing. Addressing security, safety, privacy of the containment of noise is also an issue that should be addressed and concerned as we proceed here if this is going to go on. Use of low-impact lighting, not imposing on the homeowners the direction and intensity of lights, lighting off during nighttime after operational hours. The use of PA systems. I mean, we're going to be right there, and they're going to be using a PA system, and they're going to be like we're one of the employees there, you know? That shouldn't be needed. There's, there's a lot of other resources out there, such as handheld devices, things such as that. And also, I don't know if they use music or not, but they shouldn't be PA system music at all outside. Location of dumpsters away from the homeowners with hydraulic closures, because if you know when they close the dumpsters, they bang them down, well, there are hydraulic closures that will soften that blow. Permanent trailer display, north end away from the homeowners. Parking of cars. Now, I couldn't really see the diagram, but we don't want the light shining into our property rather than to the store direction. Snow removal is another issue, and, you know, that rather than dumping tons of snow on the southern end, it should be deposited on the northern end, and somehow the runoff being revamped, which I think has been spoken about. Security system, going off at various hour, different times of the day, how do we address that? How do we get a contact with it? Security cameras. We don't want the security cameras directed toward our houses. It was mentioned, well, they're such small cameras, and they don't really see that far. Trust me, security cameras nowadays, they do really a great job, and they see distance because I have security cameras and things I can see in distances. Now, I know this may not be of my concern, but I'm just curious about the shopping carts and the storage of shopping carts. Delivery hours, and again, it goes back to, you know, the banging of the trucks and stuff like that, but also backup safety alerts, you know, beep, 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 that type of thing, you know? So, we wouldn't want that during our nighttime hours. I mean, you understand that would be during the daytime, that's something we would have to tolerate. Use of insecticides in the storage thereof. Traffic increase on Fowler House. Ever since Adams has come into our area, there has been a dramatic increase of traffic going into Fowler House, and for whatever reasons, turning around, and we really feel like somehow or other that is of concern but also needs to be addressed. I think the speed limit on our properties, on our, on Fowler House is 30 miles per hour. We're proposing 20. I know that you guys probably can't do anything but that, but it should be some way or other, that should be restricted. There's children, and I've seen children playing alongside the road in these cars, just belting down the way. And as my wife just mentioned, you know, as a personal note, we have a stone wall that's very old, and it's, we would like to have that preserved, and also the trees that we currently have. That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else?
Good evening, folks. Tom Osh, Wappinger Falls, New York, 150 Old Post Road. So, I've been listening to all the homeowners that have talked about the proposal of Tractor Supply. Many of you have been in the area 20 years, 30 years. My family's owned the property since 1939. We owned Mercedes property at one time. We dealt with the Chinese restaurant, we dealt with the transformation of Mercedes-Benz, the dirt pile that was there for a good part of two years, the proposal of Adams. Now, I'm up here to say that, not advocating for Tractor Supply, I'm not saying not for Tractor Supply, but I've dealt with more construction, more noise, than any of you have done in a lifetime. However, that being said, Adams and Mercedes have been a very good neighbor on both sides. My fence that was put up was a request of me, working with Adams and working with the zoning department of Town of Wappinger, very successful. As the last person said about the berm, I'm actually higher than Adams. They went down a good 10, 13 feet below my grade and actually solved my water problems that I had in my basement. As far as the pesticide or noise, it's minimum. I hear it, doesn't bother me one bit. I have a son. My son was an infant when Adams was being built. However, that being said, they accommodated me 100%. They've done everything possible to make my life, my, my life good with no issues. Mercedes and Adams both have low-level type lights. They go off at night. They both have, Mercedes has security cameras, which I welcome. My bedroom's on the side of Mercedes, and with the increase of population in this town comes an increase of crime. And with security cameras and minimum light, it solved that issue that I'm protected on that side. And with security cameras to a central location, it would be good for you because you have people that will do harm to your families, will do harm to your property, that are not supposed to be here. And I accommodate all protections, and I understand your privacy concerns, but if Tractor Supply does what Adams did and follow their role model to work with the local residents on everything, I think everybody can come together and work together. Now, as far as the house in the woods, that property used to be a house back there at one time. You all know that. All that growth that's in front there is all secondary weeds, twigs, and dead wood. That house was, the people left there at one time because Route 9 expanded, the several houses that were there, the Fowler House School that was across the street. This is all going back in my family's history of everything. And I got to tell you, when they, when they built Park Plaza and across the street there, they ran those big dozers with no consideration to the people that had houses and wiped out a lot of wells with contamination. But the zoning board body, the zoning board, the planning board, and Tractor Supply are listening, we're all listening to you, we're all coming here. We didn't have those options back in the day. Today, we do. And hopefully, everybody can work together and come to an amicable solution to this proposed business in the Town of Wappingers. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, is there anyone else in the public that wishes to speak? Okay. While we have, while we have the professionals just getting their comments, because it looks like there's a little bit of work that is going to be needed. David, maybe we should just go over, if you have any opened items, because it looks like there's a few things that are going to need to be addressed.
Can I go through the comments?
No, I just have the planner and the engineer also just give whatever comments for the record at this time.
Right. Do you want to go first?
No, why don't you go first?
I don't think I have my latest memo. I have the draft negative. Do you have my last memo?
All right, well, while you're looking for that, why don't I go?
Thanks.
All right, so, from the engineering side, you know, there was a recent submittal that was made, but that appeared to just address comments from David's office. CPL still has some outstanding comments. Bob had a letter dated June the 2nd, which had also referenced the March 14th letter, which there was quite a few engineering items in there. And, you know, to our knowledge, even the March 14th letter hasn't been updated. You know, the biggest item in there, I think, is the preparation of SWIP. You know, to this point, we don't have one, and I think one of the things David wanted to, you know, review was the, was the consideration of a seeker determination. As we discussed a little bit earlier, I think we need to at least see some hydraulic calculations, you know, to back up, you know, your design on the plan to show, you know, stormwater, you know, management, you know, basin. I mean, unless I'm mistaken, but...
What's the dated memo you're referring to?
Our memo, Bob's, Bob's previous memo, March 14th.
No, one answer, because I had a memo...
Well, it was June, it was June, June the 2nd, you know, you were copied on it.
I thought it said everything was addressed.
It didn't, no, 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 that didn't have, that didn't have, you know, too much in it. It made some general comments about the Acura driveway, and then just said all other items are in March 14th, 2009, or 2019 review letter are still to be addressed.
Okay, I'll go over it again, and I'll go over the rest of them.
So, our latest memo was...
I mean, if you had, if you had, if you had something that, like, responded to the March, March the 14th letter, then, but when I talked to Bob before he left and going over with the other folks, it didn't seem like there was any responses to that letter. There was no SWIP, I know that. But I think in order for the planning board to even consider a seeker determination, we probably don't need a complete stormwater pollution prevention plan, but we at least need something calculation-wise, you know, to back up what you've got on the plan to make sure that there's not going to be any kind of a drainage impact.
Yeah, we had submitted something.
Yeah.
I'll go through, I'll go through again.
You submitted all that?
Yeah.
All right, I'll go back.
Yes, I believe the comments on the engineering side have all been addressed. We went over this last time, at the last meeting.
Everybody seems to, you know, be shaking their head that there's a SWIP here, but I'll go back and double-check, double-check our files.
Okay.
So, at the last planning board meeting, we went over our memo of May 31st, and I think you've submitted plans since then, right?
Yeah, to address your landscaping comments.
Right, right.
And I think there was one comment on the site lighting also.
Right. There were a whole variety of comments in the May 31st memo. We were concentrating between meetings on the draft negative declaration. We haven't had a chance to review those plans yet and prepare a new review memo. But I think for tonight, the planning board may want the applicant to respond in writing to some... to some, many substantive comments that were raised tonight.
Well, yes, I was gonna get to that because there were a couple of comments regarding environmental issues such as, you know, the pesticides, which haven't been addressed, and fertilizers, whether or not there's gonna be, you know, issues with having to address that within the secret review. And then also, snow stop piling.
I think there are quite a few items that should be responded to in writing.
Right. Correct. And that's, we will, we're gonna need to ask the applicant to do this evening. So, for the most part, at this point in time, I think it's, we're gonna need to get the applicant to answer the questions that were brought up tonight by the public in writing. And then we can adjourn the public hearing to a future date. And assuming after the review, if there's any items that need to be addressed, you know, we'll discuss that. But if everything falls within the requirements of the secret review, we already have the written document and we can move forward with, you know, either approving it at that time.
We would tweak it, probably. Based upon the responses, we would tweak the neg deck, but it's largely done.
Yep.
Do you prefer that we respond in writing versus, we can answer most of these comments now, if you want. I mean...
I think some of the items are probably gonna need to be, you know, quantitative in terms of what quantities are kept in the store, you know, what's being kept inside, And our preference would be that it would be in writing.
I think the representations of the applicant really need to be in writing.
Yeah. So, I...
Well, I, of course, I agree, but I was sure there should be some kind of response from...
For the public who's here.
Yeah. I mean, some, some of the comments are a little, I think, should be addressed in a little more detail. I mean, it's not like it's a, we've entertained before in the past, you know, comments be answered right away regarding minimal items, you know, regarding, let's say, you know, runoff from the property, you know, things having to do with traffic that's addressed within a traffic study that's already been issued or reviewed by us. So, at this point, I mean, to put everything together in writing with a clear answer to all these questions, that way we can, you know, not only reviewed by our professionals, but, you know, the board, and then also we can make that available to the public prior to the, you know, at the next meeting. So, the question comes in is how long do you think it's gonna take in order for you to put together a, put together these answers in writing?
So, end of this week, beginning of next?
Two days.
Yeah.
I mean, would it be July the, our next, well, our next meeting is July the first, but I don't know if that's been, do we, do we have a lot of items on for the first already?
About four.
About four items. Any public hearings for that date? No. I mean, if you could get the submittal and, you know, to answer these questions quickly, I mean, we could adjourn to the first if that works for you. If not, it would be the July the fifteenth.
Yeah. I mean, there's, there's a couple of items that would be nice if we can just address them with the public. We'll give them to you in writing also, but there was recommendations for a berm and fencing. You know, I correct from wronging that, but I think we're in agreement that, you know, we'd be willing to provide those. But, you know, I'd just like to put that out here so not everybody has to come back that was here this evening.
Not only that, just so they can understand that we are willing to work with some of these comments, but maybe we should clarify what are, you know, what's your position on, on some of those so we can act accordingly? Because, you know, we are willing to give in on some of the things that were just, Judge asked a berm, landscaping, and the fencing, but I think we need some direction as opposed to, you know, in terms of what, what was the commission like with regards to, especially like a eight-foot fence. I mean, are we permitted to do an eight-foot fence? I don't, I'll say it was max, but, you know, like that kind of stuff.
I mean, if you're willing to put in a berm, I mean, you know, and that would include a fence on top of it, I'm assuming. Or if the eight-foot fence is acceptable, I mean, it's more, you know, I think that they're looking just to guarantee that they're not gonna have any, you know, any light transmitted onto their property.
Yeah.
The people at the, you know, obviously, the beginning of Fowler House Road sounded like their questions regarding that, it looks like the first two houses on the plan, I mean, they were probably worried about the lights coming from the parking lot, you know, shining within the back of their property.
Right.
So, if you can demonstrate, you know, on paper that that, you know, through maybe some type of an elevation, you know, showing that...
I think we have a lighting schematic showing, you know, light on our neighborhood property, right?
Right. There was a requirement that we don't provide over point-five-foot candles at the property line, which we had to make a modification to the lighting plan to ensure that happens. Basically, we had to pull one light back into the park lot to ensure that happens. So, you do have modified lighting plans submitted. But, you know, if we can, I mean, there's also, I would take five minutes of your time if it's okay. There was a lot of thought, there was a lot of comments about orientation of building, dimensions of the building, and dumpsters, and, you know, we brought that up before. If I could just take five minutes mainly for the public to explain how we've arrived on the plan that we are at today, why the building is where it is and orientated the way it is, I would think it would help the public understand a little bit more, too.
Okay. I think we have any, any comments?
Well, I'd like to hear what they say and then I'd like to make some comments.
Do you want to answer the questions now?
There's a couple, I think, these people wanna hear.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So, do you wanna go, I don't know if you jotted down any notes during that?
Yeah. So, let's, let's just start off with number one, the buffer, as was mentioned, when, when we have a non-commercial or a non-residential...
Excuse me. Can you speak up, please?
Sorry.
Can you turn the picture of the, yeah, the drawings a little bit so the public can...
Is it over here?
You can move it over.
Is it better?
Yeah. Well, actually, well, they're televising it also at the same time, so they're trying to, the camera usually picks it up from that location.
So, as was mentioned, when you have a non-residential use budding against a residential zone, there is a requirement that you hold the more restrictive buffer. Typically, in the highway business zone, the buffer, the side yard buffer requirement is ten feet because we bought the residential zone where the side yard setback is twenty-five feet. We held twenty-five feet along this side. In laying out the site, we did have to go through several options. Was mentioned is the building is like a hundred and twenty-four feet wide by a hundred and fifty feet deep. Typical Tractor Supply building is rotated ninety degrees, so the shorter side actually would face the road. But when that building is orientated in that direction, this pad would be off to the side of the building, making the overall width in the pad area a hundred or two-hundred-and-twenty-four feet wide. Therefore, it wouldn't fit. We had to go further back, remove more trees. We went with the option where we turn it, put the pad to the back, keeping a narrower footprint overall, keeping the ability to have this buffer. In addition to a typical driveway, and the Tractor Supply request is twenty-eight feet wide. What we did is the driveway along the north side is one-way, being fourteen, allowing us to pull the building closer to the northerly property line. And then actually, on this side, we had to reduce the section down to twenty-four feet. Traffic for truck circulation would enter off of Route nine, come down along the northerly side. We have this concrete pad off to the north. This is where our loading area is. We put all the loading away from the residents. There'd be a ramp on the pad. The truck would back up to the ramp and then actually unload product and come right into the store in this location here. The truck would then continue out this driveway, down this, and then across the front of the building, and then back out to New York Route nine. Tractor Supply does not get a lot of deliveries, so on tip, on average, we get about one delivery truck a week. That delivery, again, will happen to the north as far away from the residents as we possibly can. There is also a comment about dumpsters. As I mentioned in prior meetings, what we, what happens is Tractor Supply has a small six-cubic yard dumpster next to this ramp on the outside of the building. Anything that is recyclable, paper, cardboard products, which ninety percent of the trash generated by Tractor Supply, is actually handled within the building. We have a baler inside the building. The materials are compacted, baled, and then stored inside the building. A baler comes in once a week, picks up those material, and then brings it back off-site. The only thing that goes in the actual dumpster enclosure, it's a small dumpster, is a six-cubic yard dumpster would be located on this pad. As mentioned previously, to screen it from the road, what we're looking at doing is extending the front wall, the front facade of the building, so you have a twenty-foot-high wall across this end of the pad, so you cannot see the ramp or you cannot see the dumpster. There was concern about drainage. We designed the site in such a way where all the water within the parking area, the roof leaders, the pad, this parking area is all collected by an onsite drainage system. It's then conveyed and discharged to a stormwater management basin to the rear of the property where there's a control outlet that will then discharge it overland and then will continue off in a northerly direction. All drainage is going away from the properties on Fowler House Road. I'll also mention, if you actually take a look at the site today where this driveway curb cut is, there's presently a trench drain in it. Trench drain is a drain that's picking up drainage from New York Route nine and a portion of that existing driveway. That trench drain discharges in a southerly direction down through a swale that presently runs across the front of the property and then down along the back of these houses. That trench drain is gonna be removed. We're gonna install a new trench drain in the new driveway. In turn, that trench drain will then be picked up by the drainage system and conveyed to our stormwater management system. They're gonna be controlled and eliminate that drain that is going off to the south. Also, as was mentioned about the storage of hazardous materials, Tractor Supply does sell fertilizers, pesticides, everything that are in small sizes that would be typically purchased by households for household applications. We do not sell commercial quantities, bulk quantities of any hazardous materials. Any hazardous materials such as pesticides or fertilizers are all stored within the building. There's no garden center. This pad out back is used for the larger products that we can't get in the building such as brushhogs, implements for tractors, fencing and corrals, things that do not cause pollution. There's also, I heard the comment about, there was some kind of violation for the sale of heavy equipment. Tractor Supply does not sell tractors. We do not sell heavy equipment. Again, we sell the implement for tractors. Again, that's stored out in the back. The only other kind of equipment we would sell are smaller lawnmowers, riding tractors that you mow a residential lawn with, and log splitters.
And those are full dry, no oil on them, no gasoline on them?
They are not maintained on the property. If there's service required, they have to be sent off-site. We do not do any maintenance of those type of equipment on the property. And as Matt had mentioned, when they are bought, there's no gas in them and there's actually no oil in them, they have to have the oil put in them once they're brought off-site. The only thing that's stored outside is, again, seasonal items such as a snow blower, a lawnmower, a log splitter, those type of items, possibly a ATV or go-kart-type vehicle. The permanent trailer display, that is, was a request that we originally moved it from the front, we moved it all the way to the back, as far away from the road as we can. This is not trailers like tractor trailers for deliveries, this is landscape trailers that are for sale that are displayed on this pad. There's no noise involved with them. They're just a display area. We tried to situate it in a location as far away from the, from the road as possible. Unfortunately, I can't put them to the north. To put them to the north, I gotta be able to push the site back to the south. Again, we're trying to preserve this area alongside for vegetative buffer. As many of the residents had mentioned, they would like to see some kind of additional offering, I'd say, put along this property line. Right now, we have the staggered row of evergreens. I'll review it with my landscape architect and make sure that they're all deer resistant. But we can also, within the space, if I, if I take that space and basically create a berm with a two-to-one or a three-to-one slope on it, I could propose a berm with a height of about, about five feet and in addition to, we could look at putting a fence on, on top of that. I wouldn't put the fence on either, either property line, I'd put it on the top to gain the additional height on it. And of course, whatever fence we do would comply with your regulations for fencing. We would be responsible. If there's a stone wall on the property and we take down trees and it's damaged, we would be responsible for keeping that stone wall or maintaining, repairing that stone wall along with the fence that was mentioned. If it's on the property line, if for some reason we damage it, we'd be responsible for replacing or repairing that fence. Is there anything else to add?
I just wanted to make a little comment.
Sure. Matt's gonna get up and just answer a couple more questions. Oh, the only other thing I'll mention is about site lighting. There's a comment on site lighting. All the site lighting we are proposing is the latest high-efficiency site lighting, LED fixtures, full cutoff fixtures that spread the light on the ground. The lighting is on a timer and a photo cell, so it's intended that it would go off one hour after the close of business. Typical business hours are eight AM to eight PM. So, during the summer, if, if they close before the photo, the timer goes off, then it'd be on a photo cell to shut them down at the appropriate time.
Matt Darling, the applicant. One, just really brief comment I have. I just wanna make sure that the commission and the public is aware that, you know, Tractor Supply is, they're obviously a large corporate retail chain, they have eighteen-hundred stores. But Tractor Supply is not building this. Tractor Supply doesn't own the property. We're not proposing to sell to them or have them really be involved with the construction. We, my company, New England Retail Properties, we're based out of, just outside of Hartford, Connecticut. We are the developer. We're the, we are the landowner or will be, and we will be the ones constructing the, you know, the, the building and the site. We're a local, small company that has done this for about, we've been developing it for about fifteen years. And prior to that, we did about fifteen years of just straight commercial retail brokerage work. So, you know, we're not talking about dealing with, you know, the big box chain that really doesn't care about the local neighborhood or anything like that because you're dealing with me and you're dealing with my contractors and subcontractors and, you know, I live an hour and a half away. My most, I'm sure many of my contractors will be local, but with that being said, if, you know, we're, we're not looking to create an atmosphere that's gonna endanger the public. You know, certainly, we would hope that the neighbors in Fowler House would be customers of the Tractor Supply. While I'm not from Tractor Supply, obviously, I hope that they succeed there because they're my tenant. So, I just wanna make sure that that relationship was known, that you're dealing with me, you're not dealing with Tractor Supply. Until they actually take ownership of the, of the premise after I deliver them a, you know, a finished product, they will move in and, and store it with their merchandise, which, which is, you know, most of it's safe as far as I'm concerned. And it sounds like some of the violations that they may have had in the past, first of all, none of them have ever been at one of my stores. It sounds like there's probably been conflicts in certain states where laws changed after Tractor Supply had already stocked their merchandise and/or they were shipped something that unbeknownst to them had, had an illegal substance that was probably made illegal very recently before the violation occurred. I'm sure that there are other violations that were not as, as simply waived off, but with that being said, none of them are any of my stores. And I've developed, like I said, over thirty-five of them, all of them being in New England with the exception of two that I did in Long Island. So, just wanna make sure that that was, if that's relevant, I wanted to make said. All right?
All right. And for, do you have any questions?
I have a couple. The young lady had mentioned something about rodents, which you hadn't addressed, and you had said that there's chemicals that you're bringing onto the property. When the boxes get destroyed or they go out of date, how do you dispose of them? Do you put them in that little dumpster or do you conceal them and ship them away properly or do they end up at Royal Carding where they have to worry about dispensing them?
So, number one on the rodent issue, personally, I've never heard of a rodent issue with the Tractor Supply.
Well, you deal with feeds and, and bird seed. And if the bag breaks open, you're throwing it in the dumpster, is that not correct?
Yeah.
And that's where the rodent issue is going to come from.
Right.
And if that's not a sealed container, it's probably not going to be. What are you going to do with that?
Do you want to interest one, Matt?
So I think one of your questions was, you know, the food with the boxes, which I think we addressed, we bale them inside and then they're shipped off directly from there. They're not stored outside.
The boxes, I understand that. But you hadn't mentioned anything about the chemical itself.
If there, if there's any spills of fertilizer or, you know, dog food, stuff like that, they're going to get put in the proper MSDS bags that they have onsite. They have, they do have spill maintenance and manuals onsite for addressing stuff like that.
So the chemicals are going to be put in the sealed container and shipped away properly?
Yeah, of course. They're not going to throw anything away, that's.
They're not going to, we're never going to find that in the dumpster.
No, not unless an employee is insubordinate, but no. In terms of rodents, and rodents affect Tractor Supply's business almost more negatively than it would the neighbors because they, you know, obviously, a store like that that has dog food that's ripped open and being consumed by, you know, rats and stuff like that wouldn't be desirable at all. They do have, and actually, as part of my development, I put them in rodent traps and stuff like that. But, you know, that, that's more of a preventative thing than it is a, you know, something that they deal with because of the rodents.
Yeah, I, I deal with a company that takes our food waste, which is what that is, and we ship it up to Kingston. And then they turn it into soil. It becomes compost and they soil it. Would that be something you'd be opposed to doing?
Again.
If you have that issue?
Yeah, if, if there is.
That would definitely take care of any rodent issues.
Yeah. I mean, if, again, I'm the developer.
They'll provide the containers.
Yeah, Tractor Supply has the containers, I know that.
Yeah, this compost company will provide them, they're rodent-proof. And that would take care of one of her issues.
Yeah, and I have no problem recommending that Tractor Supply use those. You know, unfortunately, that's part of their operations that, I don't exactly have control over all of their operations.
I understand.
You know, but, you know, being a local, I consider myself local. You know, I have no problem taking the suggestions and passing them on. Certainly, I have the ear of just about everybody down in Nashville at the corporate headquarters for Tractor Supply, so I have no problem with that at all. And then, I believe I had something else that left my mind, I apologize. But rodents, cardboard, I think.
One other question is too, you had mentioned that your, your contractors, are they within like a twenty-five mile radius of, of this, this particular store?
I'm sure the MEPs will be. I, I don't know about them all. I certainly, I leave it, I leave the, the job open for bid. I have to be.
So the locals all have the opportunity to bid this project as well?
Absolutely, absolutely. And I, and generally, all of my MEPs usually are local, especially the electrician and the HVAC and plumber, just because of the licensing requirements. Is, you know, as, as many local as want to bid are certainly welcome. And, you know, there's no, there's no exclusions based on just location.
Okay, that's good, because that's what I want to hear.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, most of my jobs, like I just opened up a store in Medford, New York, down on the island. I've got one going on in Calverton right now. I've got one going up in Stafford Springs, Connecticut. All those MEP subs are local. And even Stafford, I have a, a local mason who lives like down the street. So, you know, there's, there's, some of the masons might travel occasionally because it's a, there's not as many of them as there are, you know, local MEPs. But as many landscapers will be local, asphalt, you know, paver will be local. But, you know. Fence still? Oh, oh, that reminds me, the berm. It's just a little bit of conflict because I just want people to understand, if we do a berm, then, you know, we can potentially do a berm with a fence. I don't have any problem with that. But I think they, I want them to understand that that usually means no trees because you really can't plant the trees on the berm. You know, let's just want to get rid of the fence and put the trees on top. But although I think that won't, those won't survive either, the trees on top of a berm, I think that they'll eventually go away because there's just not enough ground material. So I just want people to understand that. I'm willing to work with them, but, and I, I mean, if I, if I say, okay, I'll do a berm, that might mean no landscaping. And if, if that's the case, I wanted, I wanted to hear if the public is still okay with that.
All right. Okay.
Just to touch back on the fertilizer and pesticide spills, I'm sure things going to, Tractor Supply, you know, is a corporation. Obviously, they have some type of a policy.
They actually have a.
They have some type of spill.
Right.
You know, you know, and disposal policy of damaged product.
Right.
That's something that you can get copied to us.
Yeah, well, I'll get you a copy of the spill prevention plan. They actually have a service that they use. The name of it's actually skipping me right now, but I'll get you the name of the service they use. This has come up on a couple of Tractor Supplies before. But, you know, again, they have eighteen hundred stores, so they, they're very familiar with that and have a service that that actually provides for any spill, spills that they need to contend with.
PA systems, that was brought up. There are none. They went to a mobile device. They have mobile PA, if you will. If cashier needs support, they'll call on their little pager they have there. They used to have a little speaker out in the back where the, or actually, typically the side, because usually the fence yard's on the side. But they'd have a, a little speaker out there to call for help, if you will, but they don't have that anymore. So there is no PA, there's no music outside. We're trying to keep the customers and the parking as far to the rear and the side, others, you know, the other side as possible. So I wanted to mention that real quick.
Okay.
First, I want to think quick. When you guys are looking, looking at the berm, if you could just make sure that, you know, you don't go right up to the property lines, that you leave, you leave some kind of like a buffer there. And then what we've done, pretty successful on some other projects, is right at the limit of disturbance along, you know, the residence there, Fowler House, we've had the applicants or the, or the contractors put up an orange construction fence right at the limit, like of work, so to make sure that, that no one does cross into an, an area that's, so to, you know, to make sure people's stone walls aren't like disturbed, there are some trees right on the property line. If you put up an orange, orange construction fence, whatever, five feet, seven feet off of, you know, the property line, that that's an area that.
That would delineate the area that people are allowed to go.
Exactly. So I think, I think that would work well here.
Okay, that would help you protect the neighbors.
Yeah, I understand.
Right.
Just, yeah, to keep people from wandering off the property.
Yeah, during, you know, the work, right.
Yes.
We think we need to do a separate construction fence, especially in an area like this.
Okay. All right. So at this point in time, I mean, it's, it looks like we're going to adjourn to a future date. Again, I, I forgot, I asked you before, was it either the first of July or the fifteenth of July?
First of July is fine with me.
We need some time.
We don't think that's enough time.
We need some time, we need some time.
Internally?
Well, it's exactly two weeks from tonight.
Okay.
They literally have to submit tomorrow or Wednesday so that he has enough time to mail them. And then that only leaves them, from the day they receive it, two or three days to turn it around to get you a review.
Okay.
So I'm just pointing that.
I will do it tomorrow. But I'm here enough. By your [inaudible]. Wednesday.
If they have it in here by Wednesday?
She's going to tell me.
By the end. If you have it here Monday morning, but that's something that you'll have this Wednesday, I'm sorry, this Wednesday, you can have it by Monday.
Yeah.
Can you guys turn it around in a few days?
I'm probably going to have a problem just because I'm going away on the twenty-seventh, but I guess I could have somebody else look at it. It'll be tight.
I can absolutely do it.
Well, well, if you can do it, I'm certainly not going to say I can't do it.
It's, it's, it would be very tight.
I mean, especially with the drainage calculations.
So I think, I think we're in a spot where we're going to have to go up to the fifteenth. Fifteenth, okay. So we need a motion to adjourn the public hearing to.
I'll make that motion.
To the fifteenth, okay.
Second.
Motion's made at second, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, so we'll see you again on the fifteenth.
I'm taking over five left. We're back at the public sector. Yeah, I can talk to him. And they were telling me that we didn't have.
Everything I wrote down.
We did, we did submit. All right, I'll check also tomorrow. Well, let's, let's vote, let's vote.
Okay, our next item on the agenda this evening is discussion regarding the Flynn Rolls and Leepore subdivision. We're here this evening to vote on a preliminary and final resolution for lot-line consolidation. Excuse me, could everybody please exit? Thank you.
Yes, good evening. My name is Mike Lynch. I'm here from Engineering Properties, representing the applicant here. We received the draft resolution. We looked over the conditions, some minor changes to site plan that'll be made prior to, you know, final issuing for, if approval is granted, you know, final signature. One of the conditions was that the septic approval for two of the lots for, through the health department, which has been submitted. So we're just awaiting comment from the health department at this time. That's kind of the status of the project right now.
All right, so basically, with, in terms of the resolution, you're fine with the way it's been written?
Yes, sir.
No items that you, okay.
Uh, no, sir.
That you find as, as a problem?
Nope, no problem at all, sir.
All right, so at this time, we need to take a vote regarding the preliminary and final subdivision approval. Need a motion for approval?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, need a second? All right, motion made second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. So all set.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Good evening.
Okay, our next item on the agenda this evening is Red Cedar Arburers Landscapers Contractor Joe, if you could set that up over there because they want the, so the cameras can pick it up. Okay.
Right over here?
Yeah, over there by the microphone, it's fine.
Good evening, Joseph Berger, Berger Engineering for the applicant. We're here continuing our review of the site plan for Red Cedar to put a landscaping contractor's yard on New Hackensack Road site. Basically, as the board knows, it's a existing building. And we're basically going to be using the rear of the site for the product. The building on the left or on the south side will be used for equipment. North side is the office building space. What we've done on the site to address some of our concerns and not to impact our neighbors is we have a berm that runs parallel with New Hackensack, which will have trees on top which will buffer not only the sound, but visual of the doctors. We also have on what would be the north side, we have where our materials are going to be stored in bins, we have large bin walls and a fence on top. The fence is for visual, the bins are for sound and to contain our product. So basically, on north and on the eastward side of the area where the project is, we have screened visually and practically for sound to protect our neighbors to the north. To the south, we also have a nice fence. We feel that works good to do a screening from this direction. To show a visual view looking.
Oh, no, it wasn't.
Yeah, let's try it again. This is a picture from the back, pretty much in back looking north. This is the doctor's buildings over here. Looking north, you see that there is a, already a nice buffer of trees, but a recognize that's on the adjoining property. That's why we have our fence in the berms, which will go right here to add an additional screening that will be on our site. Because this, these trees are pretty much on the adjoining property. And also, I also have here the architect who'd like to speak shortly about the proposed sign, if you, if that's okay. Maybe not.
I'm Dan Contelmo, I'm the architect for the project. Last meeting, we proposed the exterior upgrade to the building with arbers on either side of a center. Portico and now we're proposing this sign at the road which would have a similar style arbor, just a smaller scale. And we've chosen to locate it in the area where the, where a car would be pulling in because there's an existing sign location which is out in front of the parking lot. And it's actually over the setback line. So instead of leaving it out there, we're pulling it back in here where if a car's pulling out, they're beyond the sign to be able to see in either direction. That sign square footage is slightly under what is the maximum size for a road sign. We've also proposed a sign on the side of the building. Again, it's slightly under the maximum, which will leave us enough to put a sign on a door or something like that in the future necessary. But we chose to do it where it's painted on the side of the building, each individual letter so the siding shows through. Again, more like what you might see on the side of an old barn. And this sign is only on one side, it's on the side of the building that faces the building that's also on the front. So it's not really seen from the side that faces the open field and a residential section, even though that's several hundred feet away. This would really be seen, once you pass the first building, you'll be able to look in on a diagonal and see it.
And that's proposed just on the one side of the building?
Right. Because that, and that would also be, you know, if you're allowed hundreds per feet, you could do fifty on either side, but this is ninety on one side.
On one side, okay.
And that's taking the whole rectangle as the sign, including the spaces in between the letters.
Correct.
As a point of design.
Okay. All right. Any questions regarding the, any board members have questions regarding the sign?
The sign on the building, how are you illuminating that at night?
It's not illuminated.
You're not going to illuminate it?
No.
Okay. How about the sign on the road?
Oh, it does have lights that are clear, the arbor. So there would be one on each side. It's a double-sided sign.
She's going to shoot straight down?
Right.
Angulate into the sign?
So, yeah, you wouldn't see the lights because they're hidden by the beam of the arbor.
Anybody else have any questions regarding?
Yes, sir. Do you have fuel tanks on?
Yes, we do. We have a fueling station, which is midway in the building, right behind the southerly building. So it would be right before you enter into the backyard, it's going to be. So it would be right before you enter into the backyard, it's going to be fully contained. A unit put in there, the secondary storage in there, we've reviewed the location with contamination or several times.
Okay.
Would you like to describe any kind of protection or collection service that is provided for those fuel tanks?
It's, it's on a concrete, but it's also going to be secondary containment, already built in.
Secondary?
Which is basically double hall. So that, it's, you know, so you need the requirements, so if there's any leakage, it's caught within the secondary hall. So that's full containment as required by law.
Ah, thank you.
So it's a double wall tank, plus you'll also have additional containment with the, what you have shown on the plan is a tub and the roof structure above?
Standard, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? What was it?
The neighbor?
Yeah. Sir, I guess you had some questions, I guess you attended the town board meeting? And had some questions regarding the project?
Yes.
Normally, I mean, we don't, you know, take questions outside of public hearing, but I'd make an exception for you being that you weren't, I guess, weren't able to attend a public hearing, or you weren't notified regarding the public hearing. I don't know if they answered any of your questions when they went through the discussion?
They asked you to provide a few of the questions, I still have other questions.
Okay, so, I mean, you're satisfied with the?
Well, previously, the gentleman before.
Please stand up and, yes, sorry.
Hello, my name is Edward F. Shepherd, Jr., my address is 195 New Hackensack Road. Previously earlier, and the gentleman stated a berm that has trees on top, the trees would not survive. Do we know if they would, or they wouldn't?
Okay, we go on.
Okay, the trees are posed on this berm here?
Yeah.
Which are, again, my clients, landscapers, they'll make sure that you live in them. But these are on top of the berm, the berm is for the sound, but again, the trees are for visual. We feel they will survive on this berm and be built, so that will have the soil for the trees.
Joe, would you accommodate a berm where you have a fence, between the fence and the property line, and not have a fence?
We could, but feeling that we, that's just more for visual, because the, the berm, we have the bins, the concrete bins, so the material goes up against the concrete bins.
Six foot tall?
So we feel that concrete bins are providing the sound there, and the fence was just more for visual.
And the bins, and the bins here, the way you have them, it, it, it basically appears that they're going to be, they're going to be right at existing grade. Then you'd have a six foot concrete wall?
Yes.
And then you'd have another six foot fence on top of that, so you're going to have a twelve foot tall structure, so this, this isn't, this isn't like, you know, the bins are cut into, you know, the earth.
Exactly.
They're going to be.
If you put a berm there, it would be on the other side of the bins?
They're going to be sticking up quite a bit.
It seems like it would be sound attenuating.
Oh, absolutely.
It's going to be above, above the grade, about twelve, twelve feet.
I believe the concrete will be the attenuation that we've got here, and anything, the fence will be more than any trees would, and certainly will give a nice visual, if we put a berm there on the other side, and then trees on top of that, would actually be lower than what we're proposing.
Okay.
Now, we're limited to the size of the trees, this is a mine board, this is an airport, we can't put orange trees back there anyway. So this fence and the concrete bins, we feel gives a, a superior sound attenuation and visual.
Correct.
My concerns are noise. My properties in, in the rear is where my pool is, and I also have a cottage. The doctor's offices are between me and his property. But you can, when leaves are on a tree, you can see his property from my property. I can hear the trucks dropping off deliveries of rocks, materials, and I can hear them, when they have the safety beep or on, you can hear that from my property, and the sounds of machines moving the different supplies around. So this is a concern of mine, I'm worried about the noise level in my backyard with my pool and my cottage being back there. So is, is, is a four foot berm with trees on top going to be enough to take away a lot of that noise? Is what I'm wondering, should there also be a fence, is what my concern is?
If a berm is toward the direction toward our, toward the road, the bins would be toward your property.
All right, so.
So that's, the bins are the ones that are going to.
Thank you very much.
The berm is not in that location, the berm is to protect, and the doctor's offices much further down. So we feel the four foot with the trees will give us the protection in a, which is a northeast to easterly direction.
Okay, how high?
The north direction is the concrete bins.
How high are the bins?
Six foot with the fence on top. Twelve foot.
So that's what's going to be there?
That's what the protection is.
Okay, thank you. All right, the other, the other thing that I want to bring up is the rezoning of the property. I am the only residential property of the four properties that's being rezoned, from highway business to general business. I don't feel that I should be, my zone should be changed to anything but residential. I don't feel I should pay more for something I don't want. And nobody gave me the answer whether or not my taxes would be increased. This is something I'm concerned about, I don't want an increase in something I don't want.
Okay, in terms of the, the change in zoning, I mean, we have no, we have no control over that. The town board makes the decision regarding the zoning. In terms of the taxes, have you discussed it with the assessor?
They can't give me an answer.
Okay.
They don't know.
Yeah, because the assessor would be the one you need to speak to.
I tried that already, they were unable to give me the answer, they said.
The assessor wouldn't give you an answer?
That's correct.
So your property is listed as residential multifamily, did you have the cottage?
Yes.
So you're a pre-existing non-conforming, so you're not listed as commercial, you are listed as residential. And I was told that because you're residential, this change in the zone, the commercial zone, would not affect you. Because you're not taxed, you're not taxed commercially, you're taxed as a residence.
Okay, I was told differently, but thank you.
Well, we'll check again tomorrow and get that in writing.
I was told it was highway business.
No, 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 that will be the zone.
Yeah.
But you're still a residential property in a commercial zone.
Okay.
Your zone commercially, but you're taxed residentially.
Yes, I understand, now.
So you, going from?
Going from one commercial zone to a different commercial zone shouldn't affect your taxes?
Okay.
Because you're taxed as a resident, for the use, which is residential. Regardless of what the paper says your actual zoning is.
And the two zones are very similar, it's not like going from HB, what it is right now, to industrial or something, very heavy duty.
Okay.
It's sort of a lateral move.
But we will try to get that in writing for you from the assessor.
My last concern was, you'll be storing supplies in the, in the barn, is that correct?
The product will be out here, the barn and here will be used for.
So you won't be storing any supplies in the barn?
There, there could be some.
Well, that's what I want to also know, my concerns are you going to be, you know, storing stuff that might be dangerous to my property?
Chemicals and such, you know, that's what, that's what it is.
Uh, there could be.
Testicides?
There could be some chemicals in there, but those will be contained and they'll be stored for, for the code.
Okay.
I can't say we're not going to have chemicals in there.
We should probably get that.
That's a lot on the site, it's probably safer to be inside of the building now, so being outside is going to involve the property in particular areas.
All right, is this something the town checks? To make sure everything is within, stored properly?
We could ask the, oh, we could ask the applicant to provide us a list of what he currently uses.
Yeah, and I think if we, I think if we also have them put, put that on, you know, the plan, so that it's, so that is, that is clear, whatever, you know, whatever, whatever chemicals they're going to have, and they'll have, I assume, MSDS sheets for it.
It's all the farmers, I forget, sort of have to have the data sheets.
Right.
Maybe pesticides or, as a landscaper, their licensing.
Right, what he, what he normally would have, you know, on hand, you know, what the maximum quantity would be, because obviously they're going to order, you know, a bulk amount at one time, and, yeah. Okay.
Well, that's it, I'd like to thank you for listening to my concerns, thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome. Anybody have any questions for the, for the applicant?
Just one question from my own curiosity, what's the fence going to be made out of on top of that cement wall?
It's going to be, the white vinyl fence.
White vinyl fence? It's not going to be like a big sail waiting for the wind to blow it apart?
They'll have the post fence.
Okay.
They'll be impeded into the wall, so it'll be fine.
All right.
Those bins make a wonderful, probably better than a shit center.
Okay. Anybody has any question? Somebody has any concerns regarding the sign, which, which was presented?
No, I think it's good.
Okay. All right.
So right now, we're waiting for then the town board to make its final determination on the zoning before this board decides on the site plan.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if the town board needed anything formal from the board, I don't think so.
I think something formally in writing, I'd ask the supervisor to put Red Cedar back on next Monday's town board agenda. But just that, something from your board that you're happy with, the way this turned out, Mr. Shepherd's questions, and then he received his answers.
Okay, well, obviously, I think we've, we've answered all the questions this evening for him.
I believe so.
So I believe he is satisfied. I guess the board itself, I guess everybody's satisfied with what's here. So, you addressed all the questions. So, at this point, I mean, we'll, you know, we're, we're satisfied with what's been presented. So at this point, it's, it's up to the town board to go ahead and finalize the zoning change.
Yes.
Because it's not, we can't approve the site plan application because it doesn't meet the zoning requirements.
Understood.
So we're going to wait for the town board to go ahead. They will approve the zoning change, and then once they've done that, we can then, again, act on the application.
Is it appropriate to ask the planner to, authorize the planner to prepare a resolution for next meeting?
I can wait till, I can wait till the results come out Monday night, and then prepare a resolution, assuming the town board approves the zoning on Monday night.
Okay. So, okay, so that'd be pending Monday night's meeting?
Yes, subject to that.
So assuming that they approve the zoning change Monday, you would then be able to have the resolution ready for the following?
We can do it for the next meeting, July first.
The July first meeting, correct?
Yep.
Okay, so, at this time, need a motion to authorize the planner to write the resolution?
I'll make that motion seconded.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay. Our next item on the agenda this evening is Middle Bush Road, site plan and lot consolidation. So it's thirty-three Middle Bush Road.
Good evening, Al Capelli, project architect. I'll just give a quick, quick background to those new members, would you like me to start from the beginning? Okay, so we're, thirty-three Middle Bush is the concrete block building diagonally across the street from where we are, been vacant for a couple of years. There's two lots, one that the building is on. And the lot adjacent to it. The property is zoned residential. We obtained a use variance from the zoning board to continue the allowance of the building as a commercial entity. Part of the prerequisite to that was to consolidate the two lots. One lot is point eight seven acres, one lot is point eight acres, we're combining those. The intent of the building is for contractor storage. As we discussed, in many instances, you're not allowed to have a commercial vehicle. If you're a small contractor, a plumber, an electrician in your residential driveway, this, this building will serve as indoor storage only for vehicles, for equipment, for supplies. There will be no outdoor storage whatsoever. The last meeting we were at, there was some discussion by the board in terms of both the number of parking spaces that we created, which were in excess of, of the minimum required. And also, we had a discussion about large vehicular movement or access into the building for, for, for supplies or deliveries that may or may not occur on the site. But that being said, we expanded the, the parking area, if you will, the, the paved area, if you will, towards the northeast side of the building, the east side of the building, we'll call it, to la, to allow a, a, a full circular turn of, right now, we have it as a fifty-five foot tractor trailer circumventing the parking lot, being able to, in one move, go in and out of the parking lot while adding additional parking spaces. And I don't know if that, again, you know, we're at that point that we are, you know, we're satisfied with, with either the vehicular movement or the additional parking spaces that we provided. I mean, we have to understand it isn't a residential area, so to speak, mixed use area, but, and you can see how much of the site, if you will, is now taken up by, by pavement, almost the entire site to the, to the east. So that being said, that's where we are as of today. I think we submitted a landscaping plan as well, we didn't go too far into the lighting and the drainage aspect, we wanted to make sure that, that everyone here was pretty well satisfied with, with the impervious area that we're creating.
You didn't provide any turning templates on your plan, or?
No, but I did since I got your comment letter.
Good.
So I started, so above the sheet there, again, a fifty-five foot, we just happened to show that for, for, for demonstration purposes this evening.
With the trailer, yeah, with the tractor and the trailer, yeah, but.
And be able to literally, and I know, and I've been pointing, David, to see what size vehicle you wanted us to, to template there, I don't know what would be appropriate, we could talk about it. And of course, in order to accommodate a larger vehicle, we can certainly add a little bit more pavement to accommodate that, that, that turning radius. Our aisles, for instance, are thirty feet, not a typical twenty-four, twenty-five feet. And again, we don't know what size delivery of vehicles there may or may not be. But again, we talked about not having them queue on, on Middle Bush Road there and unload or, or have a difficult time getting in or out. So that made sense, at Ralph's suggestion, and, and so hopefully, we've, we've accommodated that particular concern.
When you figure that radius, though, you should probably figure like seventy-two foot truck. Because the truck, the trailer's fifty-three feet.
I mean, if that's, if that's the size vehicle? I mean, if that's the size vehicle that you want me to accommodate...
Well, I'm just saying, if they're gonna get delivery, I hate like to see a tractor-trailer parked on Middle Bush Road to make the delivery.
Without a doubt. And I can't tell you today what size tractor-trailer would be making the deliveries. We're under the assumption here that I'm gonna be getting the plumber, the electrician are gonna get these big tractor-trailers filled with supplies. I don't think that's the case, but not to be argumentative, we tried to accommodate. We can accommodate a larger vehicle. That would mean more blacktop, more impervious. I have no objection to doing that. Again, we have a nice wooded area out there right now, and it would be a greater sea of blacktop. But I'll take your lead if you wanna see a larger turning radius there. Yeah, that's, you know, that's up to you. I'm easy. You guys know that, so...
Well, the building, is it gonna be carved up into several different...
Yes, it is.
Different spaces, or somebody's gonna take it all, or?
No, several spaces. This is...
Because that might have an effect on what size, like, delivery truck if there's gonna be several business.
And we showed this last time, a photograph of what the building looks like today, the footprint of the building unchanged, perhaps what the building's gonna look like in its new incarnation. So, that's what we're looking to create over there, so...
Okay. Any other comments from the board?
Yes, does that site have a problem with water?
With water in terms of stormwater?
Yes.
Yeah, well, there's wetlands, if you will. There's a low area to the left of the building, if you will. There's a... I'll call it a local wetlands. It's not a New York State D E C wetlands on the left-hand side. It's just a collection area of stormwater. So, we haven't done anything on stormwater management yet because we don't know where's the starting point in terms of the amount of impervious that you want out of us. So, I don't wanna... We don't wanna redesign it two or three or four times over, so...
So, that wetland is local, or is it?
Local wetlands.
Army Corps Engineer.
It's Army, correct.
Is it Army?
Then the planner's comments noted that that was a federal-regulated wetland, so you would have to go through Army Corps Engineer if there was anything that you needed to do there.
It's our code. Don't we have a buffer?
Had a problem?
Or it's just to ask them if they're gonna require it because it, you know, depending upon its size.
And we've got a buffer as well?
Yes.
Hundred-foot buffer?
The building is there.
Well, but in terms of, you know, your drainage for the expanded, you know, parking lot, I mean...
Understood.
You know, are you thinking about tying it into the basins that are out, that are out in the front, or?
I haven't even thought about it yet.
You haven't like figured all this out, Al? Yeah?
Step at a time.
Step at a time. There you go. That's the word of the day.
And that entrance, of course, as I think we previously discussed, that is a new county constructed entrance they put in a couple of years ago when they did the paving project along Middle Bush here a couple of years ago. So, it is to their design, their location. We're not touching that.
So, basically, the big question really tonight was whether or not, in terms of the site itself, for the parking and the, you know, the changes from the previous plan.
That's correct, which I have a copy of. It's just a mini version of that parking lot, a little bit more condensed. Yes, we could not get a large vehicle turning in there, and I don't remember how many parking spaces we had, but again, I think we need 15, and now we have 22, something like that.
If there was... What, required was 15, you said? I forgot. If it's... How many parking spaces did you need?
Says here, total required 15, and they're providing 22.
22, okay.
No nighttime parking there, right? We talked about that.
Is there a way to... We can figure it a little bit, even if you lose a couple of parking spaces, just to make it accommodate the tractor-trailer?
No. Well, what I'd probably do is just make the aisleways a little bit larger and add blacktop to the east side of the building in order to create that oversized turning radius. I mean, again, we have to prioritize kind of where the importance is on the number of parking spaces for that monster vehicle that may or may not ever enter the site. So, I don't know which is more appropriate. I can, you know, we can have our cake and eat it too. I'll make the parking area a little bit bigger at the expense of more impervious, and we'll do it that way.
Does everybody feel, do we need to accommodate the larger vehicle, or you think it's what's being provided there?
What do you have on there now, Al, on your turning radius? A box truck, like a box truck?
55-foot, what is that, a WU?
Well, 55 foot's a tractor-trailer.
Right.
And you're saying that that's a tractor-trailer turning movement?
That's correct.
You haven't seen this yet?
No, we haven't. No, yes. We'll check it. No, absolutely.
So, this is, so basically, you're accommodating a tractor-trailer now?
55 feet, not larger, though. It depends upon... They do have larger templates and larger vehicles.
65 footer, but I mean, that's...
That's correct.
That's...
Yeah. I mean, for common for deliveries isn't gonna be huge, so...
Why don't I have our traffic guys take a look at it?
Okay. So, does everybody feel comfortable with this current layout, wanting to move forward?
I think we can move forward. You know, he's gonna tweak it a little bit, but I think we could. I mean, I think it's a good idea for that spot.
Yeah, we'd like to get moving, move a little bit further along on, again, the full set of plans, drainage, lighting, things of that nature.
I believe everybody, it sounds like they're okay with the concept, I mean, for the site layout. I think everybody would like to also see, you know, a full, you know, full set of plans with, you know, the complete proposal.
Absolutely, but we don't wanna change 15 times every time we...
Right, right, yeah.
Right? So, that's why we're taking kind of the baby steps. So, next submission, that's fine, if you guys think that this is...
Well, Dave's gonna check that, right, with the turn-in?
We are, we are, but you can work on that next submission.
That's fine. I can send this out to you tomorrow, and you can take a look at it.
Sure.
Yeah, and informally, if you will.
We'll take a look, sure.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I mean, we could also look at, I mean, depending on, I mean, how the wheels track, maybe even look at some, you know, mountable, like, curve where if they had that one instance of the tractor-trailer, instead of going wider on, you know, the pavement, maybe there's an opportunity to...
Mountable curve?
Do mountable curves.
How about mountable cars?
Mountable cars? No, 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 that doesn't... It doesn't work.
Just checking.
God, you're testifying on my first meeting.
We can figure something out.
You're passing, you're getting a passing grade, by the way.
Okay.
So, it looks like, yeah.
We're good.
Looks good.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Okay, our next item on the agenda is the architectural review regarding Dunkin' Donuts on Route 9D. See, Al can stop here this evening. He did make the submission. Do they have any... Do we want him to show more on the submission itself?
I would like to see a little bit more in the submission, and I'd like to see the pictures of what the trees are gonna look like.
Okay.
A little more detail.
A little more detail, so showing the actual trees themselves, I mean, you know, whatever the types, whatever type of tree he's gonna be using.
I don't think there's even any measurements where that set is actually located, other than the picture, right?
They're just giving us an approximate colored-in location.
Well, we'd like to see, we'll be helping this tomorrow.
Get the...
Just a little more detail than just a pen-in, yeah. Little bit better.
I guess he's probably looking to see what the dimensions of the structure is to where the trees are gonna go.
At least one.
Right.
You know, something.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Any questions, Al? Okay. All right, so I guess we'll see that at a future date. All right, our next item is the architectural review regarding a mobile station, 349 Route 82 for the canopy retrofit.
Good evening. My name is Paul Jean, representing CPD Group, and we are here to present one more time, as required, the revised lighting plan for that site that is located on Route 82. We were asked to bring the light level to .5-foot candle around the property line, so that will meet the criteria of the town. So, we did that, and we have a few points, and we submitted that, where we have .3, .5, and .7. And the reason for it is that with the lighting, the way they set it up in the, you know, software, they are not able to finish .5 in every places. However, what we decided to do, we decided to come up with a solution that is quite, I think, effective. We decided to add a shield. This is the light fixture right now, and we decided to add a shield that will be made on-site, and that's basically a sheet of metal that will be placed to show in distance to mitigate the situation. That means that limit how much light can go over the property line. It is basically, as I can show you, by doing so, we can limit where the light goes and how far it goes, and therefore be able to meet understanding. It is, as is right now, while it's not dark enough. This is the fixture, and if we place that, we move it, as we move far away from it, we got more light that can shed out. But if we go closer, and if it's again even deeper, we can block more light. Therefore, there won't be any requirement to satisfy this requirement that was asked from us. We can control that, so this is what we're proposing to answer to the requirements that were asked from us.
That's with respect to light shedding from basically under the canopy...
To the street.
To the property line.
Yes, that's what was asked.
David, do you think the screen is an adequate measure to perform, to make them comply with the requirement of the code for the light that's gonna shed the property?
According to the plan they've submitted, they're not exceeding one-half-foot candle at the property line.
Okay. Relative of, I mean, just the light in general?
There's gonna be a lot of light under the canopy. I mean, it's gonna be as bright as day.
Well, we will do that as well. We asked the vendors and the engineer as well to change the fixtures. They did.
Right.
By changing that, the level of the general area, that means even on the canopy, if we were to look at the first plan we submitted, is quite different from what we have now. But the other time, that time we were here, the issue was to meet .5-foot candle, and that should not shed over the property line. And again, we were able to accomplish that in most part of the space. However, we think one added solution would be to add a shield that we can control moving forward or backward toward... Move toward the fixture or away from the fixture. It could be deeper or depends which size we'll make. We'll make it happen.
So, anybody have any comments?
Now, this doesn't pertain to the blue band around it. This is just the undermount lighting.
Yes, this is undermount lighting. As far as the blue band. We have our site right on Merritt Boulevard, which is a mobile station, and we went there to look at it, and I took pictures of it as well, to show that, to see that the amount of light that is shed by this band. It do all very small LEDs. What it does, it just shed light on the blue face of that parapet, and therefore, you can see. But it does not add to the lighting that is shown under the canopy. It's still a different function, so...
I also went and looked at that lighting as well, and from what I can see, when I'm on Merritt Boulevard, I can see that blue band at least 500, 600 feet away.
Well, it is illuminated, so we will see.
And our concern is that the people that live across the street from that are gonna have to see that blue band in their yard. Not only is all the light you have underneath, but they're gonna have to see that as well.
Well, again, it is, we got LED light that is shed on the surface of the band, on the parapet, not the parapet, so... Missing the word here. So, but this, again, because I went there personally after the meeting, and I look at it, and I measure it, and I look at it, I said, there is no added light. Now, is it visible? Yes, it is visible because there is light that shed behind it. And as far as creating an issue for the neighbors, which we don't want to happen anyway, that, to what I see, does not do it, because even, as I said, you drive by, you can see. That's the goal, to see, but to be a nuisance, that is not the case. And again, I went there, I have a light measure with me, which I use to measure light at any time, and I did that for here also. You can see it, but that won't add much because it's LED. That is easier to deal with if we were to use different type of lighting or light fixtures.
Well, this is a different of opinions, that your opinion, my opinion is I think it's too bright for the neighborhood.
Which one is too bright?
The blue band. The lights underneath are a little bit bright, too, for the neighborhood, but you're gonna tone them down, you're gonna put that baffle up there to direct the light a little differently. And we had mentioned earlier that if that is not something that meets what we would expect it to, would we be willing to change any of that? Because it's hard to tell what you're telling us and then what we can visually see.
Well, if I may suggest that...
You know, we don't live there, but we have friends and neighbors that all live there.
Well, I understand that, but again, beside going to that site in, on Merritt Boulevard, I went to that first site itself, okay, at night, not during the day, at night, to see. I look at the area and see where residences are, and I can see that they are not that close to the property. But let's leave that aside for a second. If we look at the fact that we have the blue light, or the blue band with the light behind it, the purpose it is to see it. Now, I would suggest if we want to have further discussion on that too, let's separate the two and move forward with the canopy light, and we can, if we need to, bring other ways to show that the blue light does not pose a problem. Now, if we were, if we have more of us to look at it, that will help, because again, I witnessed it, and it looks like you and I would not appreciate it the same way. Therefore, that will help us to determine which way is best. But again, we know we are in a residential area that is taken into account as well.
Okay. I think we should all take a look at it.
I would like to go visit that.
Yeah.
See if I...
Everybody make their own assumption, you know. Don't go by what I say, but everybody make their own opinion.
But that, again, as I... But that again, as I, as I specifically asked, if we would separate that, because we can, knowing that the canopy, the light that is, light fixtures will be under that, has now, well, with the light that would be around this canopy right above here, they don't interfere with each other. So, what I'm saying is, we could move forward with the lighting, as we showed, we can control that. This is the point was not to exceed a certain level, and we can control that with the shield that we came up with. But the part, the light that is on the outside of the blue will be a different thing.
Barbara, you had mentioned maybe with dimmers, that they could adjust it if it was something that didn't meet...
Depends on how it's manufactured.
Yes.
Are you using dimmable lights?
Well, now, for the, for the LEDs, you're talking about the LEDs that is around the blue band?
No, underneath.
No, underneath.
Well, underneath, again, the problem with the dim, using dimmers, is that we will all, we have that in the past. We always have the issue, it's too bright, it's too bright, we have to roll it down. So, what we did again, we changed the fixtures that are, that produce lower light level, but good enough for the site to be illuminated. And again, the idea was not to shed over the property line. As we said, we proposed that we use the shield to keep that from happening. And again, we can take the both of them and look at them and see, they, we really took care of having them to change it, change it again. When we do ask them for revision, we don't just ask for one option, we ask, they send us two or three, and we look which one will match what was asked from us, and we said, well, we're gonna carry that on, because this is what is required, although we would like it to be brighter. But if it's, that has caused problem in the past, we don't need to come back with that again. And that's why again, we added the shield to control the light.
Are the, are the lights, the new lights underneath, are they dimmable?
No, none of those fixtures we're gonna use are, none of them will be dimmable.
I think we, I mean, we discussed this at the last meeting about, about dimming the lights, and you had said that you didn't wanna do that, and that was what prompted the conversation about lowering the wattage of the lights, possibly. Obviously, that didn't get carried over into the new plan, now the shielding is, is the path that we wanna go.
Now, if we, again, the shielding is, is, if we look, if we look at... We got under the canopy, I think, which showed how many light fixtures we have under the canopy, and how many of them we gonna be able to control, so we don't let the light go over. That's what's, this is what was asked from us. So, but again, the overall lighting level is down, it's considerably down, compared to what we started with. And each time we come back, we still lower it. But now, in order to go to the part, a .5 foot candle, we added the shield. That is to show, we understood the comment you made, we took into, took that into consideration.
I think the shield is a good idea, but if you have too many lights up there, and it's too bright for that area, are you gonna be willing to take some of them down?
Oh, can you repeat that?
Remove some of the light fixtures, if, after it's up, and we determine it's too bright for that area, are you gonna remove some of them light fixtures?
Well, the key is not in the amount of fixtures, it is in the amount of output of each fixtures.
How will you fix that situation if it's too bright for that neighborhood?
Well, if we have to, well, we're saying after we install the new ones?
Yeah.
Well, when we install the new one, we'll go over it, and then we'll check with the alarm meters, and we'll form their, make a decision that is correct, that is appropriate.
I don't think that's your decision to make alone, I think it's our decision to make after we see it, because what you're telling us and what we can visually see is different on this piece of paper than what we can... We wanna see it physically, what you're gonna do. If it doesn't meet that criteria of what we're looking for, then I think something needs to be done then.
Well, you asked that we lower the level of lighting, we did that, and more than once. You asked that we don't have more than .5 foot candle, we worked to accomplish that as well. And on top of that, we added the shield. Then, I don't know if, if we were to remove those fixtures and add lower ones, we'll have very limited light, well, I would say the lighting would not be, you know, as durable as it should be for a station. Again, it's not what we would want, but we went down more than once to, to take into consideration the, the comments that were provided.
The question, so, I know we brought this up originally at the first meeting you were in regarding this. Since that meeting, has there been any other sites that you have, or that, you know, other, you know, station owners that are, you know, bound to providing the same type of criteria? You know, have they, does this exist anywhere else, other than in a commercial area? You know, somewhere where you don't have, you know, light from all different directions? Because we do know that on Route 9 down in front of Walmart, the station down there does have, you know, does have that brow light across the top, probably has similar lighting underneath. You know, there is, there is a glare that comes off of the lighting when you're off to the distance. And I think that's what's driving some of this, is because that station, you know, there is a lot of light coming off of that, that particular station under the canopy, and from off of the building. So, is there any other locations that you have that we could possibly do a field trip to see, to see how this has been done in other locations? I know we asked this before, but have you looked into that at all?
The other station that I believe we have, that is in Newport's, I mean, basically the outskirts of Newport's, I forgot the name of that town, where we have, I think we have similar situation. However, if I may go to, no, to Fishkill, the comparison that I provided is about the LED input or effect, not the lighting, because if we were to consider Fishkill, Fishkill level is higher than that one, light level under the canopy. So, that means again, we worked on it to make it happen. So, my comparison was about the LED band.
How does this compare to what's installed currently?
Oh, what is so called currently is, is, it, it, there is not good lighting right now, right now. Because I think two of the fixtures are down or broken, and of course, pending that we fix it, because that was the goal, this is one of the reason why we need to change the lighting. It's, it's not a good lighting situation of a level.
So, say that current system was up and running, how does this compare to that?
This is way better lighting than what is there. Better in the sense like quality of fixtures, but also output is, it's better for, you know, you can see better. So, that is, that's a good difference. But again, we got two fixtures that are down currently, that are not operating currently.
Yeah, I mean, this is a difficult, this is a difficult one, because it came in as an architectural review. All right, which is basically just a, usually we do that for just signage. You're asking the board, you know, to review lighting. And what ends up happening is, we don't have the ability, our consultants haven't reviewed these plans, that's the problem.
Is it approved?
They, they have the plans, but they haven't reviewed them. There hasn't been a letter, I believe there was one letter issued in the beginning regarding the foot candles.
We haven't written anything on this at all.
Okay, nothing on this, on this particular one?
I don't believe so.
Okay. So, what's happening is, we're bouncing back and forth here, you know, with your, with you and us, and it hasn't been reviewed.
I think we, we really need to take a, a close look at the numbers under the canopy.
Yeah.
They're as high as like thirty foot candles.
We're, I mean, we're bouncing, yeah, we're bouncing.
Well, I measured the foot candles right in your hallway. I have the foot, I have the, the light meter with me, and I can measure here as well to see or to appreciate the level of, you know, the light we're receiving. But again, that's maybe our fourth meeting here, and each time, we do exactly what is asked from us to lower it.
I mean, it's, it's the point where we're saying, okay, if we, throw this out there. I mean, the board doesn't have to agree with me, but if we said today, we said, okay, you can go ahead with what you have planned, all right? But then we hold you to having us go out on a field trip after it's installed, okay? If we went out to look at this, and we went out with a light meter, you know, to physically look at what was, you know, the as-built condition, would you be agreeable to replacing all the fixtures on the property to lower it down to acceptable lighting levels?
Well, it's, it's gonna sound a little bit subjective when we say acceptable, because what we show here, it's what should show on-site when we do install them. Because again, we don't, it's, people who does that, they use the software, and they input the exact, you know, light fixtures and so on and so forth, and produce the plan. And now, if I were, if I should ask, if you, after installing them, and then we come with a light meter and decide that, you know, it's too high, that's gonna create a problem, because we've made the investment, and what we did it with, your blessing, in the sense like, we look at that and we agree with it. Now, I like to move forward with it, and, and provide it that we look at it, because, you know, we submitted it for revision. And again, I have the meter with me right now, I can pull it and tell you what is the level at, you know, my waist here, what is it? So, and we could compare, compare that with what is, is right on our plan right now to see how the numbers compare to each other. But after that, if we go and, it's gonna be...
Okay, so that, I mean, all right, so I mean, that was the one option, is to, to either go move forward and then have, to deal with it after the fact, okay? Which would mean that we would have to go out, look at it, and then if it becomes too bright, you know, or we can ask the planner to review the, what's been submitted, and provide us documentation to what his recommendations would be, whether or not this is an acceptable plan, or if there's some kind of, you know, medium in between.
I know that when we've done this in other municipalities, there have been standards for lighting under canopies. And just a quick look at this, to me, without being an engineer or a consultant or in any manner, the, the foot candles under the canopy seem high. And I think for the board's edification, you need to know maybe a station in the area where this level of foot candles is, and then take a look at some of the other foot candles, the stations that might be acceptable to you within a residential, and find out what those foot candles are. So, for example, there's Valero down in the village, or other ones that are in more residential that may have lower light levels. And you can have someone, you know, determine what those light levels are, and if you find those... I find that a much better approach than allowing the applicant to install something and then tell him later he has to take it out.
And actually, there's, the county has put out a, a letter, has put out a, a letter to all planning boards regarding light levels at commercial facilities, which I don't have with me.
I'm looking at an LED, and I'm not saying this is, is, is perfect, but I'm looking at a gas station LED retrofit, looks like a very bright situation. It says, average illumination, approximately fifteen foot candles, IES recommended foot candles, ten to fifteen foot candles. And then, this is, this is way over an average of fifteen.
But that, I would not question with the, but I would say the source of your information would be, I mean, we will need to compare it with, you know, who's, who's produced the information that we're reading of. But also, we need to look at one thing, we took the time to visit the other sites that is close to us. And we got sixty-three foot candles here for Gulf, we got twenty-seven here for Vallejo, we got twenty foot candle for Ciggo. And of course, they are in different locations, right? But again, what I'm saying is, is again, we make the effort, that's what I would, I would, I would ask you to consider. The effort that we put into it to keep asking the consultant to change it, change it, and they do change it, because we are paying for it. But of course, I appreciate and understand your comment. But if we were to, you know, be given the opportunity to finish the project, I am confident that we'll find that is done correctly, because we don't want the neighbors to feel like we are a problem for them. We are there to render service to the public, of course, we're making money too. But the, the whole point is, if we don't do what we have to do to make it right, we'll feel it. So, we're not looking forward to that.
Where are those locations? They on Route 9?
This is Gulf.
There's Gulf.
We got one on ID, we got one on Route 9, we got one on, two on ID, actually.
Yeah, it's not even comparable.
But again, they are different locations, but at least I'm showing, okay, they varies where you are, and all that, and we're trying to do the best to, you know, create the light, you know, situation that works for, for, for our side.
You had made a comment before that the software you guys use has done, you know, the computer does all this, but they don't take into consideration of the location and the people that live there. When they do that software analysis of how much the lighting's gonna be, you don't program in that it's in a residential area where there's homes around there.
Well...
You just take a general thing, and then it, and that's good for Route 9 or Route 9D, but it's not good for Route 82.
No, no, I, I brought that up, because we asked if we have, I think you suggested, ma'am, that, you know, we could visit other sites to see what it, you know, it's shown, or what is the output on the other side. We showed that we did the diligence on that, we went and see what it is. But now, when we ask consultant to present the lighting plan, although they show us, this is what is recommended for stations, for interior, and for outside of that, that is what they say, right? But the town decide what to go. That's why when you, I would say, many instances, make comments, we take that into account, we keep changing it. And, and that's, that's what I would like us to remember, to, to, to appreciate, that we, we work with, with what we ask, we don't just say that this is what it is, but we go ahead and change it more than once. And again, we added extra layers of, of solution in order to make it as best as possible. That's, that's what I'd like you to, to appreciate, because otherwise, we would have, you know, keep sending over the same thing all the, all the time. If we take all the presentation we've done, and take all the copies, you'll put them side by side, you see substantial, and I'll put it in bold letters, changes that we've made.
To the, another option for the board might be to refer this, the lighting plan only, to county planning. And I'm sure they have input and guidelines on that, and they could respond to the board with...
The bulletin that I referenced earlier was from Dutchess County Planning, so they have guidelines on, you know, acceptable light levels.
Under the canopy?
Right, under the canopy.
And this does not include the band around the perimeter, this is just the lighting underneath regarding...
This would be...
But you could refer either or both and have the county comment.
Actually, what I'll do is I'll, I'll find it, and I'll forward it to all the board members, because I know I do have it saved on my computer somewhere, so I will get it off to everybody. Unfortunately, I think that's, I, I think we, it's just, everybody was expecting something a little different.
Different which way?
At least I was expecting, because I believe the last time we talked, it was talk about lowering the wattage of the fixtures.
We did, sir, we did.
Oh, you lowered the wattage of the fixtures?
You said that, I said that many times, yeah.
But the, I'm looking at...
We did, yes, we did.
So, maybe, did it get mislabeled on the plans? Because I'm just looking at, I have two submissions here, one from May the 3rd. I have ten fixtures underneath the canopy. Seventy-seven hundred and twenty lumens. Sixty watts each, with a total of six hundred watts. And I'm looking at the most recent submission, which was given on May 31st. And it's the same, ten lights, seventy-seven hundred and twenty lumens, at sixty watts apiece, which gives you six hundred, six hundred watts. So, the wattage has stayed the same, the fixtures have stayed the same. So, the only thing that's changed is just the shielding.
Well, now, if you, if you look at, you said you have two submissions? Look at the output of lights around the perimeter, because the number of lights, of fixtures, may not, may change or not, and in all cases, may... may not, um, may change or not, and in all cases, maybe it didn't change, but what I'm saying is, we, you, you insisted on not letting more than point five foot candle outside of the site, okay? So, I remember that, you insisted on that, and also, I don't think we spoke about number of fixtures we can have under the canopy or not. It says, okay, lower the light, um, fixtures, uh, the light input, output, actually, so we don't be, we won't be a nuisance for the, for the, for the, um, neighborhood, which we did, we did. And again, we keep changing it, we keep changing it again.
Well, you got, well, you're keep changing it, I mean, you only, you didn't change the fixtures, I mean, we discussed, I know we, we discussed last time, I just, I know that we discussed lowering the wattage, I know we discussed, you know, the light at the property line. Um, I know, you know, that Mr. Marinaccio has brought up to you multiple times about the, you know, about the, you know, about the lighting level and the glare, I mean, but you didn't lower the lighting level.
Greenway Guide recommends an average of one foot candle.
We did. Yeah, so I can, I can read it off the, the plans that we have, and again, I can pull, I have my computer with me just in case, because I have emails from the vendor that shows me options, and they are all different, and, and we came up with the one that shows point three, point five, and as I said, one area is point seven, we said, well, let's add the shield to put that back where it should be. So, it's, that shows that we're seriously considering what was said, and the comments that were made.
I mean, I could put it to a vote for approval, but I have a feeling that the rest of the board is not gonna approve this.
Well, I think, um, some appreciation need to be shown for the effort that we put into it, not to, again, we don't just bring you the same things all over, we make the changes that were required from us. We do. That's why we brought to show point five, point three, at right where was asked, because last time, I remember, uh, it said on eighty-two, we got too much light spilling out, now we don't have that anymore.
All right, we're gonna refer to the planner here for, in regard to the light level, you think that according.
I've, I've got the, um, plan on it, Dutchess County Planning Federation, Understanding LED Lighting for Site Planner Review.
That would be the document I was talking about.
Yeah, which I can send to everybody tomorrow, including you. It talks about, it says, high security areas may need to, and this is regarding LED lighting, two thousand eighteen. Sorry. I'm sorry. This says, high security areas may need to be up to five foot candles, but anything higher is a waste of electricity and source of glare and light pollution. We've gotta get to the bottom of, you know, what the appropriate numbers are.
Okay.
I think the board should recommend that, um, this be sent to county planning, and have them actually comment on this specific plan, um, the overall site lining, as well as the under the canopy, because at some points, the highest part here is twenty-nine foot candles, and I think that that's above and beyond what is needed. But the county can give a more authoritative opinion on what this should be.
I agree.
We're talking about county planning?
Dutchess County Department, Dutchess County Department of Planning.
Okay, well, when we asked the question, um, maybe at the first meeting, um, what requirement should we be abide by? And we were told repeatedly, point five should be.
Well, that's what's.
That's not, that's not what we're talking about exactly.
Right.
The, um, lighting at the property lines can be point five or less, but the under canopy lighting can be like a ball of fire, you know, too bright at that one spot. I think that's what we're talking about.
How much is required?
I'm sorry?
How much is, if you, since I don't have it, could you please tell me how much is required? What is a foot candle, the level of light required, or commanded by the county?
I'm getting all different numbers, and, and they, some of them seem too low, so I think we've gotta, gotta get to the bottom of what is appropriate or not, which I can't say right now, unfortunately.
Well, the, I mean, and doesn't the report say, um, for different institutions, like, uh, well, type of properties, how much it is?
I read, I read before, where one article said, no more than fifteen, and the average should be between ten and fifteen. And if that's right, if that's right, you've got twice that under the canopy.
But again, um, I think they would say, um, again, I don't have the report, and I'm trying to understand the logic in, in, you know, at least understand how it worked. He said, um, for a gas station, you would have a certain level for here, we got a certain level, for each place, there was a level.
Right.
But again, as I suggested to you, again, I have my light meter here, we can be sure to see how it is here, and if we compare with what we have on the, on the board, we can say, hey, you're way out of, you know. But again, um, I'm not objecting to have a vote done, but I'm saying again, the, the effort we put into it to make it happen, in, and in total, um, you know, with, in mind, we are in a residential area, and therefore, we work with the plant, the lighting consultant to lower the left, and within that.
And I believe that's what the, I believe that's what the board members, I believe that's what everybody's big concern is, that you're, you're adjacent to a residential area, none of us are lighting experts. You know, there are concerns that it's gonna be too bright, uh, we need some, I think we need further input, because it seems that this, you know, the brightness keeps coming up again. Yes, I know we're shielding and stopping light from, from leaving the property, but as the planner had mentioned, you know, you basically have a, you know, with all this light underneath, it's like having a, a, you know, a bright torch burning, you know, and everybody can see it from their house.
That would not be the case. That would not be the case.
You're a very good advocate for your client, and, and you've made a real effort, but I don't think we have enough data here tonight to make a decision?
Well, we have, um, can you show where, where we should, the level of light in color, where is that, you know? This is what shows how much light is, is, um, should, okay, those are, those are basically a scale, this is a scale. Sorry, this is a scale, right? The red would be, what's that, forty? Okay? Right? But also, blue would be the lowest, look at around here. Okay? Blue would be between point one, point sixty-five, point sixty-three to zero. Okay, so, look at it. Now, um, if we, this is why they produce that, they give us all kind of, um, ways to show how this gonna, you know, uh, we have all these, that's, that's for the reason, and we make the copies to give everybody the opportunity to look at it. And also, it's in black and white, where it shows, okay, how much light will be even under the canopy, and beyond the canopy. All this is produced, is part of the.
That's not showing you a horizontal view of the light, you're looking at it on the down view.
There's a picture on the right side at the bottom, like, I don't, if I could just say, you keep thinking, I think it's slightly from down, but if you're standing across the street, what David was saying is that it's bright, looking at it like a ball of fire. And if you look at that bottom picture where it's down on, it's bright. So if you go above it, where they're looking down on it, it doesn't look that bad. So it's that head-on look that.
That's what I, that's what I said. You keep showing us the down version of it, you're not showing us the horizontal view of it.
Well, we, we have it right here, we have it right here, okay? But also, remember, this is in black and white, the contrast will be absolutely, yeah, that's black and white, it's gonna be absolutely visible, or, you know, it's easy to, to, you know. But the whole idea is, if we say, the, the board says, okay, you need to be at twenty, we're gonna have to make it twenty. If the board says fifteen, we're gonna have to make it fifty. Otherwise, we won't be able to light, but it's, you know, the board, what I'm saying is, we have the opportunity tonight to decide, it's twenty, it's gonna be twenty, make it twenty. If we come there, it's not twenty, we're gonna have to do it over. Or make it twenty-five, make it fifty, maybe it's ten, I don't know which number.
Our problem is, we don't know what the number should be, which is why we need more input.
Well, you have, you have this document, if you pass it around to us, we will go through it and say, okay, you said, look at the highest number that is permissible for the, for your application, station, gas station, we come in, and so, if it's ten, we're gonna have to do it then, otherwise, we're gonna be, you know, asked to remove it, because we didn't follow the guideline, but at least we have a guideline to go by.
None of us are qualified to give you, give you a guideline.
Well, I said, we said, the, the, the county board has, has issued a report.
Because once we approve something, we can't just go take it out.
We need their opinion.
Absolutely, I agree, that, that's why you, you refer us to the county, which already set out a report.
And I, I'm not comfortable approving anything based on what we're looking at, to tell me.
No, they have guidelines, but we need, we need their actual input on this particular subject.
But that's not a final decision, just 'cause it gets the input, we still have to make our own judgment.
Refer to Dutchess County Planning for comments.
Come, very good, then, let's do that.
Guidance, yeah.
Let's do that.
Does everybody wants to do?
Sure.
Okay, so if everybody's all, we're gonna have to refer to Dutchess County Planning to get some comments back from them. Okay, I believe last time we did allow for the, the progression of the canopy, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I mean, it's not, you know, so the lighting is gonna have to come into play, we're just gonna be dependent upon the comments back from Dutchess County Planning. Again, it, it's, the way the application came in, you know, if it came in as a full, you know, submittal, you know, for this, and it would have been bucked out to everybody in the beginning, they would, we would have received comments, but it was put in more as a, as a application for a sign. I mean, usually, we do, you know, we do architectural reviews for signage, because there's really not a lot for us to look at. You know, we're looking at conformity with, you know, with the zoning code, everything else. Again, none of us are experts at lighting, um, you know, some of the members are bringing, you know, are having concerns because of the brightness, it is very bright, I mean, what's, you know, what's proposed on paper. Uh, that's pretty much where we are at this point.
The other thing, Bruce, Bruce, that, you know, you might be able to do, is if somebody, when was the Valero built in the village? I mean, is it possible, is it possible to maybe get, you know, the lighting plan for that, and see what, you know, the foot candles were under the canopy there, and if the board members think that that's not too bad, maybe that'll be another, like, measuring stick besides.
Right.
Whatever you get back from, you know, the county. I can't make too many comments on here, because we have a conflict of interest, we do work for Paul and his firm, so, that's why I'm kinda staying a little, like, quiet, I wanna get that out there. But, uh, you know, maybe, maybe that's another, like, avenue, in like addition to getting something from the county, see what that one, you know, like, measured.
I can ask Ryan from the county down in the village.
Yep, yeah, possibly, if you can get some.
And I'll also send it up to Heather at Dutchess County Planning tomorrow.
Okay. All right, so, I mean, it's pretty much where we're, where we are. I mean, we'll try to get the information back as soon as possible, and we can go from there. But we, we can't make a decision tonight. The only thing I can do is I can put it out to a vote on the application, to either approve it or disapprove it, you know, and then you'd be starting from zero anyway, because you'd have to make a new submittal. I'm sorry, I, I, I don't, you know, I'm kinda, we're kinda stuck, you know.
All right.
Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll submit it out to county planning for comments, and then we'll move forward. Well, also, the board members will go out and look at, once we get some information on some different properties, we'll go out, take a look at them prior to the next meeting.
In the meantime, what do you want us to do?
By the next meeting, we will have a resolution to the, to the lighting issue.
In other words, we'll, we don't have any more action on our side, we'll be waiting for your, right?
We'll get the comments back from planning, and from Dutchess County Planning, see what their recommendations are. If they're gonna, you know, if there's discussion regarding lowering the, the foot candles under the canopy, you know, we're probably gonna side with them, you know, and their recommendations. Again, this isn't the only application, I believe we have another application that's out there, um, that's gonna be following behind this one, there's a similar situation.
Before I may, I, I do want to thank, when the county responds to your inquiry, or has, um, produced the, um, the report or input that you're looking for.
Yeah.
We don't have any choice, then do exactly what was asked. That means, if the county again says fifteen, we don't have any choice, if we need light, we're gonna have to do fifteen.
But we're looking, the input would be coming back to us for whatever the conditions.
Yes.
You know, that they say, and it'd be up to the board to make the final decision.
Said, well, I mean, as you said, you will side with the county.
Right.
And, and us, we don't have any other choice, then abide by whatever the, the, the board says. Now, I believe if they said fifteen, I don't think you're gonna ask us to do ten. In other words, if they say ten, you will tell Paul and Tom and, and CPD, you're gonna have to do ten. So what I'm saying is, we could look at it this way, whatever the town or the, the, the county says, this is what we go. Now, um, for the sake of time and going back and forth with that, if I may suggest that, the vote could be pending the result of the inquiry, if I can use this term, with the county, we won't need to come back here, we'll be notified how high it needs to be. And then when that letter comes to us, we don't have any choice, then just do exactly, otherwise, we won't have light, that's the bottom line, because, because if you don't give us the authorization to, to put them on and put the right one, we can't put them. If we do, we'll be in a trouble that we're not looking for, that means we move everything and start over, and all kind of things, which we're not looking for. So we could cut that, that, um, step, we wait, we're gonna wait, of course, but let's just wait, whatever you tell us to do, this is what we're gonna do.
There it is.
Because we can't do it, before you give us, okay, we can't do it, no way.
So if the county comes back with a recommendation, and I don't know how long it's gonna take for them, um, if you discuss the recommendations with the zoning administrator, and come to an agreement, you can revise the plan and get it to us, you know, immediately, and then we can go ahead and approve that.
Yes, that's what we're gonna have to do, yes.
Could you do that?
I mean, in other words, we'll go as you, as it is dictated, dictated to us, I mean, we, as, that's all we do.
So, I mean, obviously, they're gonna, I mean, you know, the staff is gonna send you the, the recommendations from the county, and once you get it, if you discuss it with them, and you can come up with a, with a number of foot candles, and it's agreeable, I mean, then at least you can change your plans and come back to us with it, you know, for an approval.
Uh, there is one thing I don't follow, we get the, the response from the county.
Right.
And what do we do from there, again, please? We discuss with zoning.
If you wanna discuss the, the findings from the county with the zoning administrator.
Okay.
And you come to an agreed number.
Okay.
And in that way, at least you can revise the plan, to come back to us.
To meet that number.
Right, to meet that number.
Why the plan to make the number.
So it's not that you're gonna come back here to discuss what the county planning is, you, you'll have a set criteria, and then you can submit that to us for an approval.
Okay, and I, and I believe at that point, you will vote it, because that's what the county requires, because, yes, this is what the county, what I'm saying is, yes, at some point, we all will be at the same, will be at the same point. So, as I'm saying, I suggest that.
Basically, the next time around, is if you come to an agree to number, and then you come back to us with a, with a revised plan, and we look at, say, yes, this is agreeable, and we could just vote yes, 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 across the board, and then, you know, you're done.
Yes, I agree, as I was saying, what I'm saying, one step we could avoid is that we just vote that we vote, when we have that from the county, send it to you.
But we can't agree on a number, because we don't know, I mean, I, I could turn around and say one.
I agree.
You know, everybody else could have a different number.
Yes, I agree, agree. But I'm saying, we all will go by what the county says.
Right, because they, because they're, they have, I think, a little more experience with the lighting, being that they wrote, you know, they wrote a, a bulletin on it.
Yes.
I think they're a little more, and that would help us to make a proper decision.
I agree.
Okay?
But, okay, that's fine.
All right, thank you. Okay. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a extension for, um, guardian temperature controlled building for lot line consolidation and special use permit. Um, they're seeking a first ninety day extension for lot line consolidation. Um, we get a, get a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion to approve the extension.
I'll second that.
Motion made, second, all favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that motion carries. All right. Our last, last item on the agenda is Zamiello two lot subdivision.
Good evening, folks. Mike Gillespie from Gillespie and Associates. On with us tonight is Guy Caffrey. He's the owner of the property. I presume everybody is somewhat familiar with the project. It's, it's been going on for some time. It's a two lot subdivision off of All Angels Road. I guess I want to first state that I want to thank the board for allowing us to be on the agenda tonight. It wasn't as of last meeting. It was not scheduled for this meeting for any discussion. This has been under an adjourned public hearing for quite some time. We had an adjourned public hearing at the last meeting. No one was present for that meeting. I, I take responsibility for that. I apologize for no one being here. Someone should have been here, even though I, I believe no public was here, but it was an adjourned hearing, so that would have been the proper thing to do, so. That's, that's.
We adjourned it off to a date because we had nobody to ask for a future date.
Right. The reason we're here to, well, one of the big factors, one of the things that was hanging out there, which we did not have at that adjourned hearing date, was anything from county. What we need is, we needed access off of All Angels Road, because it's a county road. And we hadn't heard back from them yet. I think as of Friday, they formally sent something that, that indicated they approved one of the driveways, but then the other driveway, they want us to flop, flip-flop from one side of lot to the other, which is certainly doable. But we, we have that information now that we didn't have up until, back then in Friday. So what, what the issue is, the reason we're here before you tonight, is Guy has someone who is very interested in contract relative to one of the parcels. So even though the board adjourned that hearing till August, the first meeting in August, I think it was, I'm not sure exactly sure of the date. If the board was so inclined, and, you know, had in hand here, I ask, if it was, if we could be set for the first meeting in July, that would save a month, which would make a big deal relative to the building season and him trying to get this house together for one of the lots. So that's really the reason why we're here tonight, to see if we can just hopefully maybe, maybe bring that back a month to the first meeting in July, so we can, we can, we can gain that extra month of getting, getting things done.
Okay. So the question is, then, with all the items, well, not that there's a lot of items, but obviously, there's some changes that need to be made to the plans.
Right.
I mean, you just want to, I mean, we're looking to just kind of move the process along.
Right.
So it is, so it wouldn't be for, looking for an approval at this point. You just want to go ahead and get the, get it back, get, get the submission in to be reviewed?
Well, I think the way it was set at, at the meeting before last was, we were waiting on a letter from, from the, from the county.
Right.
And, and there was an apprehension of closing the public hearing until we had something from them, okay? So that's why it was left open. But I, I do believe that David's office prepared a draft resolution of approval for preliminary and final, so that's, that's out there. It certainly hasn't been acted upon because of where we're at. But I mean, if that could be taken care of, possibly, if there's not a big public uprising at the first meeting in July, I would think that we could move on that, too. Certainly, you need an updated submission, but I don't think there was much left.
And then you would be willing to republish in the paper for that?
Whatever we need to do.
For that date, just because I know that we did publicly go out with the August fifth date?
Yeah, whatever, whatever we need to do, you know.
Is there enough time to do that?
Yeah, if it published for next week, they would just have to resend to all the neighbors so that everybody was aware that the date was moved up.
Okay. So if they go ahead and, if they do that, then it should be no issue of putting them on for the July first. Okay. All right. So if you go ahead and get that done, give up the rest of the board. Anybody have an issue with, you take a local or just a, a vote, anybody? Is there anybody against moving it from the August fifth meeting to the July first meeting?
No.
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 Okay. So there's no objections, so we will go ahead and do that.
Make a motion to authorize.
All right. So we'll make a motion to authorize the change for the Zamiello subdivision, change the date of the public hearing. Okay, motions made, second, all favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries. I think Ralph made a motion. Ken Walker made the second.
All right, thank you very much.
So Mike, when do you plan to revise the charts?
They'd have to go in next week, so, okay, next week. Okay, all right. Thanks again, folks.
So we'll see you on July the first.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that being the last item, let's get a motion to adjourn. I'll move that.
I'll second that.
All favor?
Aye.